Call this meeting to order. Mr. Hanson, we have a very important report coming up here.
Yes, sir, we do. And Mayor, members of council, before I introduce your first briefing, I'd like to call to your attention the annual report. It's been part of the longstanding tradition of this management team to deliver to the city council in advance of your annual goal-setting workshop that you usually have either the end of January, early February, an annual report. And my cover letter is contained therein. And it is in preparation of next Monday and Tuesday when we will reconvene for your annual visioning and goal-setting workshop. So hopefully you'll find it interesting, and I'm available to answer any questions that you might have about its contents. So, well, welcome back. You all have been off for two weeks, and I hope everybody's rested and ready to go to work. But your first briefing today is a return with a report from our consultant, Samir Bawa, Ph.D., Managing Director of BBC Research and Consulting, where he is going to give you a final report out on his findings. And with a new council in place, Samir, I would ask you to just kind of back up a little bit and make sure you share with three new council members the findings that you had.
Absolutely.
So as Samir grabs the podium to take charge of this, I'd like to also introduce Rebecca Key. And Rebecca is your new procurement, your purchasing agent. Taylor Adams, as you know, came to the city from Mississippi and fulfilled that position, then moved up to be Deputy of Finance, and then, as you all know, he is now currently serving as the Interim Director of Economic Development. And so a lot of new faces in the city changing jobs and taking over responsibilities. So with that as an introduction, I turn it over to you, Samir. And thanks for being here.
And if I could say real quick, just to let you know, Shannon Kane is home ill under some doctors' care for right now, so we'll lift her on our prayers.
Welcome. Thank you very much. Thank you all for having me and giving me a chance to talk a little bit about the disparity study. And just a bit of background before I jump into the slides. My name's Samir Bawa, Managing Director with BBC Research and Consulting out of Denver, Colorado. We conduct studies like this across the country for lots of cities, states, different types of organizations. And I served, along with my now-partner Iris McClish, as the principals in charge of the disparity study. So the disparity study itself was built around one fundamental question, which is, do minority and women-owned businesses face any barriers as it relates to City of Virginia Beach contracting? And we assess that question in a number of different ways as part of the disparity study. At its core, we looked at the participation of minority and women-owned businesses in city contracts and compared it to their availability for that work to assess whether they're underutilized on City of Virginia Beach contracts and procurements. We also looked at conditions in the local marketplace for minorities, women, and minority and women-owned businesses to assess whether they face any barriers in areas that might serve as inputs to competing for city contracts, things like human capital, business capital, business ownership, and business success. The study also provided a comprehensive review of the contracting policies and program measures that the city currently uses to help identify any policies that might be inadvertently serving as barriers to small businesses or minority and women-owned businesses and making it more difficult for them to successfully compete for city work. And then, as part of the study, we also provide an assessment of and recommendations related to program measures and efforts the city could consider using in the future that might help better encourage participation of small businesses and minority and women-owned businesses as well. It's also worth noting that the study looked at similar outcomes for service-disabled veteran-owned businesses. My presentation today is focusing on minority and women-owned businesses, but in the final disparity study report, which is now public and posted on the city's website, you'll also find results for veteran-owned businesses. In addition to talking and assessing program measures and outcomes for minority and women-owned businesses, we also provided a review of the legal standards around disparity studies as well as minority and women-owned business programs so that the decisions that the city makes moving forward are in compliance both with the strict scrutiny standard of constitutional review, which means that programs of this sort have to be narrowly tailored to meet its objectives, and the city has to show a compelling governmental interest in having measures that are directed at minority and women-owned businesses, and also making sure it's in compliance with relevant case law related to these issues. So as part of the disparity study itself and to meet all of those objectives, the study was made up of a large collection of both quantitative and qualitative research tasks. In the spirit of time today, I'm going to focus in on three of those tasks: the utilization analysis, the availability analysis, and the disparity analysis, which really serves as the core quantitative analyses as part of the study. So jumping right into the utilization analysis, the objective of that analysis is to actually calculate the percentage of dollars that actually went to minority and women-owned businesses during the study period. And our analyses focus on all minority and women-owned businesses regardless of how successful they are, regardless of whether they've elected to become certified as a SWAM business or as any other type of business in the region. This is assessing what percentage of dollars are going to all minority and women-owned firms. And we start that process, or started that process, with city data. So very early on in the process, we worked with procurement to collect data on all the contracts and procurements that they awarded during our study period, which is July 1st, 2012 through June 30th, 2017. We collected information on both prime contracts and subcontracts in construction, architecture and engineering, other professional services, and goods and what we call support services. Once we compiled all that data and worked with procurement to understand all of it, we then went out in the field to conduct what we call utilization telephone surveys. They are short surveys where we're just confirming basic characteristics of each utilized firm. So their primary lines of work, which allows us to classify contracts appropriately, and then the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners. We then combined that information with information that we gathered from the city, and that put us in position to calculate the percentage of dollars that actually went to minority and women-owned firms. So as part of the study, we looked at $1.2 billion over that five-year study period. And what our analysis showed is that 18.9% of those dollars, or 221.8 million, went to businesses that are either minority or woman-owned. Now, this is how the data break down by group, and I'll get into that in a second, but I want to also point out that for minority-woman-owned businesses, we classified those businesses along with their corresponding racial/ethnic group. So for example, if we had dollars going to a minority or a black woman-owned business, those dollars would be classified along with all other black American-owned firms so that when I talk about women-owned businesses in the context of the disparity study, I'm referring specifically to businesses owned by non-Hispanic white women. So what you find in terms of participation, that the plurality of those dollars went to non-Hispanic white woman-owned businesses at 8.2%, and the racial/ethnic group with the largest percentage of dollars was Asian-American-owned businesses, followed by black American-owned businesses at 4.5%. So of course, this information on its face and from a practical standpoint, from a policy standpoint, is useful on its own, but it becomes more useful when you have a benchmark to compare it against. So how many dollars would you expect minority and women-owned businesses to receive, and how do the dollars that they actually received measure up to that benchmark? That's the primary objective of what we call the availability analysis. So we use what's called a custom census approach to measuring availability, which is considered the gold standard in the disparity study industry. It allows us to collect specific details about firm characteristics and match those characteristics to the characteristics of the actual prime contracts and subcontracts that the city awarded during the study period so that we can measure availability precisely and for each and every contract and subcontract that's included in our analysis. So we begin that custom census approach by first creating a phone book of businesses that are located within the city's relevant geographic market area and whose primary lines of work fall within those industries and sub-industries where the city actually spends money. So it's customized specifically to the city's contracting and procurement. Once we've established that phone book, we then attempt telephone surveys with each and every business that appears in our phone book. So we end up attempting these availability telephone surveys with more than 7,000 businesses, and it's all different types of businesses. They just have to do work that's relevant to the city's contracting and have a location here in the region. And once we got those businesses on the phone, we asked them a series of questions that gave us more information about their characteristics. So their primary lines of work, the roles in which they work, so they work as a prime contractor, a subcontractor, or both, the year in which they were established, where in the region they can serve customers, and whether they can serve customers in Virginia Beach, their capacity to actually compete for city contracts, so what's the largest contract they've ever been on in the past or actually been awarded, their interest in actually working for the city as well as other government agencies, and then the race, ethnicity, and gender of their owners. The result of all of those surveys was a database of potentially available businesses. And what it allowed to do was, what allowed us to do is to go through a contract-by-contract matching process so that for a particular prime contract, for example, we could take its characteristics and find out the match between that contract and the firms in our availability database to identify those firms that would be potentially available for that one contract piece, and also estimate the percentage that are minority or woman-owned. We then repeated that process for every prime contract and every subcontract, and then aggregated all of that in a dollar-weighted way. I'm seeing a lot of blank stares, but this has a much more in-depth explanation throughout the report, which might make a little more sense in context. But essentially, what comes out of this is a dollar-weighted estimate of the percentage of dollars that you would expect minority and women-owned businesses to receive. So looking at the results, again, going back to that $1.2 billion of contracting that we considered, our availability analysis suggests that minority and women-owned businesses considered together would be expected to receive 25.2% of the city's dollars if you consider the characteristics of those firms and the characteristics of the types of contracts that the city awards. Breaking that down by group, you see that, again, non-Hispanic white woman-owned businesses account for the largest portion of that availability at 13.3%, and black American-owned businesses show the largest availability among racial/ethnic business groups.
But it has black women?
That also has black women in there as well. So those are both black male-owned businesses and black woman-owned businesses.
Does the final report doesn't break out the black women at all?
It does not. So it doesn't break out, it does not break down each racial/ethnic group by gender. So once we completed the utilization analysis and the availability analysis, we then used the disparity analysis to assess whether any differences existed between those measures. So in order to calculate what's called a disparity index for a particular group and a particular set of contracts, we took the dollars that that group actually received during our study period and divided it by the dollars we would expect them to receive based on availability. And that's what results in what's called an index or a ratio. So a disparity index of one indicates parity. In other words, participation is largely in line with availability. Anything less than one indicates that that group for that set of contracts is being underutilized relative to their availability. And anything at .8 or less, jumping ahead, indicates substantial underutilization. That's important because many courts take disparity indices of .8 or less as evidence or an inference of discrimination that exists in the marketplace, and that often serves as justification for an organization like the city to use relatively strong measures to help address those barriers or that inference of discrimination that might exist. Now, it's important to note that doesn't necessarily mean the city itself is discriminating against minority or woman-owned businesses. What that does mean, though, is that there are barriers that are existing in the larger marketplace that the city may be acting as a passive participant in encouraging and in perpetuating. So looking at the disparity analysis results, first, I'm going to show you results for all contracts. This isn't the entire story, and I'll show you some more results, but it does make a sensible starting point to look at outcomes for minority and women-owned businesses on all city contracts considered together. You see a solid line, solid vertical line at 100, which is the line of parity, and a dashed line at 80 or .8, which indicates the threshold for what's considered a substantial disparity or substantial underutilization. And then all minority and women-owned businesses are shown in the first row, and then the individual relevant business groups are shown below that. So the first thing to note is that when you consider all minority and women-owned businesses considered together, that they show a disparity index of 75, which is a substantial disparity. In other words, minority and women-owned businesses considered together are receiving about 75 cents of every dollar you would expect them to receive based on their availability for that work. Now, the results differ depending on individual group. So you see Asian-American-owned businesses show a disparity index of 200-plus, which means that their participation actually exceeds their availability. But then all of the other individual groups, black American-owned businesses, Hispanic American-owned businesses, Native American-owned businesses, and non-Hispanic white woman-owned businesses show substantial underutilization relative to their availability. Now, there are lots of different breakdowns of the data in the final report, but one key breakdown has to do with some of the contracting measures that the city uses. So of these $1.2 billion of contracting, a great deal of the city's contracts come in construction. And on construction contracts, the city uses the SWAM program, which is designed to encourage the participation of small businesses and SWAM-certified businesses in city contracting. So on those contracts, if a prime contractor is subcontracting, then half of those subcontracting dollars should come from SWAM-certified businesses. That's how the program works, or showing good-faith efforts if they tried to do so. And then there are a number of contracts outside of construction that the city awards without the use of contracting goals. So an important question that comes out of this is, one, what happens when there are no small business, no strong small business or minority and women-owned business efforts when the city's awarding contracts? So what's going on in terms of outcomes for those no-goals contracts? And a second question is, how effective are the use of SWAM goals, which includes minority and women-owned businesses, service-disabled veteran-owned businesses, and small, non-Hispanic white-owned businesses? How effective are those goals in increasing the participation of minority and women-owned businesses in particular? So looking at the results, it's in the same format, except now you'll see dark bars for goals contracts and lighter bars for no-goals contracts. I hope I didn't mix that up. I did. So goals contracts first in the lighter gray bars. What you see is you still see a substantial disparity for all minority and women-owned businesses considered together. You see a disparity index of 55. And you also see substantial disparities for Asian-American-owned businesses, black American-owned businesses, Hispanic American-owned businesses, and Native American-owned businesses. You don't see a substantial disparity for non-Hispanic white woman-owned businesses on goals contracts. So to some degree, those goals contracts seem to be fairly effective in, or somewhat effective, encouraging the participation of non-Hispanic white woman-owned businesses in city contracting. You go to the no-goals contracts, and the story's a bit different. Whereas overall, you don't see a substantial disparity for all minority and women-owned businesses, that success really seems to be enjoyed by one particular group. Asian-American-owned businesses did not show a substantial disparity when the city awarded contracts without goals, but we did see substantial disparities for black American-owned businesses, Hispanic American-owned businesses, Native American-owned businesses, and non-Hispanic white woman-owned businesses, all highlighted with the red border.
Could you comment, because there's a big difference. You see the white women at the bottom changed substantially where there's no-goals. Do you have any insights you can impart as that might be just the opposite of what you think might be the case intuitively?
So is your question, why is the difference so large between goals and no-goals contracts for white woman-owned businesses? It would be pure speculation, but part of it could be that, and we see this from time to time, depending on the marketplace, that when you use small business goals or something like SWAM goals, that there may be a group or two groups that disproportionately benefit from the use of those goals. So when prime contractors are going out to meet those goals, they may, there may be small, in this case, white woman-owned businesses that get a lot of that work, and that results in a boost for that one group, but it may not raise all boats.
Would the statistics infer that maybe that there is a not seen but a subtle bias in the goals program that produces that disproportionate result?
Um...
Or does the data have that granularity to show that?
You know, it's tough to say. Certainly, the way the program operates is when there's a SWAM goal in place, the city doesn't encourage one group or the other. It's more, you've got a subcontract with SWAM-certified-owned business, or at least half of your subcontract has to come from them. You know, there could be built-in biases in the marketplace or in who chooses to become certified that may help account for it, but again, that's just speculation.
Yeah, Mr. Wood.
Just to follow up on what John said, I can almost tell you exactly why that is, because there are certain women-owned subcontractors and vendors in construction projects that are big, typically big pieces of the construction project. So as a result, that's why that's there. And just as I saw that at first, it is kind of counterintuitive that, wait, you know, that no-goals is, or goals is higher, and no-goals versus, and all that. But actually, when I think about who I know in that industry, I know exactly where that's going.
Okay, thank you very much.
Jeff.
Oh, Taylor, did you want to comment on that?
Just a quick context, if I may, also, on the councilman's question. The other thing to mention on the goods and services expenditures, that's also where state contracts are in play. And it would be important to note that there are a number of state and cooperative contracts that are awarded to minority-owned businesses in particular that the city participates in every year, and that drives a lot of the participation, where the state has already done the solicitation and we're able to participate. So some of what appears to be overperformance in the no-goals phase is attributable to state-level contracts and cooperative contracts that we can use.
Kind of piggybacking on the same thing, what, how does this, when I, in the fore part, I don't know if this is mentioned, but when we have contractors and subcontractors that have in-name-only owners that are strictly there so that they can participate in this process?
Yeah.
And really take advantage of what's going on?
Yeah.
Is that broken out?
So we do not, part of our scope is certainly not to audit the certification process or what motivates individual firms to, for example, what's most common is a husband putting his business in his wife's name to get some sort of credit for being a woman-owned business. So we assess that qualitatively, so to the extent that that's an issue in the industry. So as part of this process, we look at, or we conduct interviews and collect qualitative information from different businesses working in the industry. Comments like that certainly came up, and have come up nationwide in different jurisdictions we work with. And, you know, I don't think it came up to the degree that we mention it as a key consideration the city has to make as much as we've seen in other places, but certainly, that's always something that a city or an organization should take into account and make sure that its certification processes, to the degree that it has its own, which the City of Virginia Beach does not, but even the certification processes it's relying on have measures in place, site visits, that they're actually going through a lot of process to make sure that the firms are owned and operated by the individuals who, at least on paper, they say are owning it. Now, that's also, it's a bit of a tightrope walk because you want to make certification accessible, and you don't want people waiting six months to become certified if they're a disadvantaged business. At the same time, you've got to take things into account to make sure that you're verifying that firms are who they say they are.
David?
I'm just curious, and this may be from the raw data that we may have to pull it, but do Virginia Beach-based businesses do better than the non-Virginia Beach SWAM businesses?
Uh, that's a good question, and I don't actually know the answer to that.
Okay. Is the raw data available?
The raw data on where that utilization is coming from and whether they're minority or woman-owned in different parts, not only in Virginia, but really nationwide, are available. So that's part of our analysis. I just haven't looked at that breakdown in particular.
Just the city, okay.
Yeah.
Ms. Hyland?
I believe in your earlier presentation, you said where you looked, what constitutes the region.
Yep.
I think that's important. I mean, did you use all of Hampton Roads, or I think it was only just a few locations, but I'd...
Yeah, so you're going to put me on the spot because I'm not going to remember all four counties, but there are four of them. So it's Virginia Beach, Chesapeake, Portsmouth, and...
Norfolk.
And Norfolk, thank you. So that's what we considered.
No way of knowing. I would really like to know what are the Virginia Beach businesses that are available because, you know, it's very likely that somebody in Portland wants to do work in Virginia Beach.
Yeah, and we've got that information. It's all, it's in the raw data. I just haven't looked at those breakdowns on the availability side or the participation side. But typically, when we start the process and start our availability analysis, one of the first questions we ask is, where is the city spending its dollars? And that's the, that's the region that we should analyze. So that's how we define that, and I just haven't, I haven't broken down by county, availability by county, but...
Well, it's also, I think their availability to bid would depend on how much work they're doing for the other localities.
Right.
And we don't have any measure of that.
Yeah, what we have a measure of is that for any firm to be considered available for city work, they have to say they're interested in actually bidding on city work, and they have to say that they serve customers in Virginia Beach. So those are prerequisites. So if they don't say yes to both of those questions in our availability survey, we would not consider them available for a city contract. Now, that doesn't speak to how that changes week to week, month to month, based on the other work they're bidding on, but at least in a static way, we make sure that they say they can serve customers here and that they have interest in working for the city.
We really don't have any kind of data about what the other, didn't Portsmouth do a disparity study at some point, or, I mean, how about the others? We don't have any idea.
Yeah, it's not, there's not really a great way to integrate that in a principled way in our analysis, so yeah, we don't have information on what's going on at the time of these different bids.
Okay, Jim?
So you indicated that you used four cities. Why did you not use the MSA?
Well, we wanted to, again, limit it to where the city actually spent its dollars during the study period, and those four cities accounted for more than 90% of the city's dollars. So we kind of build it up granularly and go from there.
Makes sense.
Anybody else?
I would just be interested in knowing how many dollars we spend in each city.
Sure, yeah, and again...
Yeah, me too. Me too.
That's a question that is very easily answerable. I just don't have the data on top of my head.
Not that we would only want to spend money with Virginia Beach people, but it would just be interesting to know.
Absolutely.
I mean, just how the distribution is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. So a number of considerations fall out of the disparity analysis results, particularly some of the substantial disparities that we see. So I've just highlighted a few of them, which I'll talk about briefly, but please ask me questions about any more, and then we list out several other considerations for the city in the final report. One thing that came up in a lot of our qualitative work, and you see in some of the quantitative work as well, is the idea of large, particularly or relatively large contracts serving as a barrier to small businesses and minority and women-owned businesses here locally. So one thing we often hear is that the contracts are just too big for a small business to realistically compete for, and what they'd like to see are smaller and smaller contract pieces. So the city could consider efforts, of course, to unbundle larger contracts into smaller contracts, but of course, it also has to take into consideration that there is a cost to that, both in terms of sheer dollars and an administrative cost to awarding a larger number of contracts, monitoring compliance on a larger number of contracts, all that. So that pretty much goes for all of my considerations. I'm in a fortunate position where I don't have to think about budgets and the reality of some of these things, but in terms of increasing diversity in contracting, these are some things that often come up as part of talking to minority and women-owned businesses and small businesses, and things that have shown to be pretty effective in other... and things that have shown to be pretty effective in, in other jurisdictions. Another issue that came up pretty often in our interviews and some of the public testimony we col- we, we collected was issues with contract notifications. So again, um, the city uses services to uh, notify the community about contracting opportunities, but that is a for-pay service, for one. Second, it's not customized to who the firm is. So if I am a, uh, well, I am a market research firm, it's not the case necessarily that I will get emails or notifications about work that is specific to what I do or the size that I can compete for. It's rather a one-size-fits-all where you kind of sign in and, and look for, look for contracting opportunities on your own. So lots of folks uh, noted that they often don't know about uh, relevant opportunities as they come up just because they didn't hear about them, or it's, it's too late when they do. Something else the city could consider doing, and it does some of this now, is a, a small business set-aside program. So one consideration it could make is expanding the use of small business set-asides. Keep in mind that this is a race and gender neutral measure, so it would have no racial or, uh, racial or gender component, but rather setting aside certain contracts of certain size just for small business or SWAM certified business um, bidding. The city does a bit of that for certain contracts under ten thousand dollars. Um, one consider, one consideration the city could make is expanding that use to more contracts and perhaps using a larger uh, threshold because it's just, it's easier to encourage small business participation when they are competing against other small businesses and aren't being, aren't competing against large multinational businesses, for example, who can take advantage of economies of scale and can, can make the numbers work more easily. And then finally, uh, race and gender conscious goals is something the city can consider as well. So I described how the city uses SWAM goals. One option available to it um, is the, is to consider using race and gender conscious measures where you apply contracting goals to individual contracts based on the availability of minority and woman-owned businesses for the work involved in that contract. And prime contractors, as part of their bids or proposals, would have to either meet that goal through subcontracting commitments with minority and woman-owned firms, or would have to show good faith efforts if they tried to do so, and the city would have to sign off on those to accept them as part of their bids. Another consideration that's not on here is the process that the city will likely go through in updating any overall aspirational goals. So our availability analysis shows the availability of minority and woman-owned businesses considered together to be twenty-five point two percent. Typically, an organization will go through a process where they take availability into account, but also take into account other factors that might impact availability in the marketplace that um, may justify an upward adjustment to that number, a downward adjustment to that number, or no adjustment at all. But it is a process that um, we think the city might consider going through just to make sure that the aspirational goals that it does use appropriately reflect the marketplace and the contracting realities that, that exist here locally.
Can you move on to that, I have a question?
Yeah.
Since you ended with aspirational goal, because my original question, when you said conscious goals, was that prescriptive? Or was that aspirational? So I'm just gonna ask again, just to make sure that there's not an overlap between your last comment. When you say race, gender, conscious goals, were you referring to prescriptive policy goals? Or were you referring to somewhat nominal goals that didn't carry with it prescriptive requirements?
I'm gonna answer a question a slightly different paradigm. So I think of an overall aspirational goal as something that an organization sets, let's say annually, and says, X percent of our dollars are gonna go to minority and woman-owned businesses through a variety of different measures that we might choose to use. So that's what I mean when I talk about aspirational goals. When I talk about race and gender conscious goals, I'm talking about something a little more granular. So as part of meeting its overall aspirational goal, as one of the measures, the city could consider setting participation goals on individual contracts. So if the city has a two-million-dollar construction contract going out, it can look at the types of work that's anticipated being involved in that one project and say, you know, it looks like we could uh, realistically uh, expect fifteen percent of this contract to be going to minority and woman-owned businesses.
That would be a prescriptive goal, then.
Prescri- well, I.
They're prescribing something they have to meet, and if they can't meet it, they gotta show cause.
Yes, as long as by prescriptive, you don't mean required or a strict goal because there, there should be enough flexibility in the process where if primes are not meeting that goal through subcontracting commitments, that there is a good faith efforts uh, mechanism in the, in the program as well so that they can at least show the efforts that they made, and then the city, at the city's discretion, they can decide whether those, those efforts uh, justify a waiver.
Now, my last question deals, is the data set, all the stuff you collected, of sufficient statistical significance and reliability and accuracy such that it would serve meeting the judicial test to have what they call prescriptive or policy set programs for awarding contracts?
Our analyses are statistically valid, and we have a great deal of physical confidence in particularly our utilization analysis, our availability analysis, and the resulting disparity analysis.
Now, my, but my, maybe you're not the people that can answer this, but what I'm asking is, given all of that, does the quality of the data relate to judicial precedent and the standards of judicial review when people challenge programs? Because in the end, that, that might be something for a lawyer to go and look at, but in the end, as we try to move forward, if that's where we're trying to close those gaps, I'm trying to make sure that the data that we've collected, the statistical analysis, the causality and versus correlation supports and would stand up to judicial review based on standing precedent when those have been challenged.
Yeah, that's really a question for a lawyer.
Yeah, but I know they're, I know they're watching, but I really think in the essence, that is something we want to know, and I think that's a, a next step we would want to pursue because ultimately that, closing some of those gaps may require that. And we ought to be, make sure we're fully leveraging our analysis and what we've done. And I hope with the report, I think Mark would be a good thing to attach is you could maybe representative samples of where there's been judicial review of challenges to these kind of things, we start educating ourselves, and we could, later day, talk about how we would go about looking at that data and making sure it meets the judicial test. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Anybody else? Jim Wood?
So, look, a couple of questions. First, going back to what, what Jessica mentioned about the people cooking the books, so to speak, about their certification. Typically, we're, we have, we have SWAM certification, right? Isn't that what's required? So my, my guess is probably since that's a government certification, it's probably illegal to lie about at least that one. So, yeah, I mean, it's not saying that people don't do it, but, but it's there. I keep going back to this disparity index as part of this, this overall, this overall thing, availability versus basically willingness to work. And, you know, you, you indicated that it, it's, it's kind of a moment in time when you're doing your survey, when you talk to a particular vendor.
Right.
Saying, you know, theoretically, would you like to do work for the city of Virginia Beach? Or would you do work for the city of Virginia Beach? But that, that, that answer could be different based on their volume of work or, or something like that. And it seems to me, and may, maybe it's not for, for your study, but perhaps it's something that we, we ought to take a look at internally, is if, if you look at people who've done, you know, minority vendors who have done work for the city before, but are no longer doing work for the city, figure out why, why that is. I- i- is it because they, they had a bad experience with the city? Is it, is it a fact that um, you know, they're too busy? Is it a fact that, you know, there's not enough of a profit margin in government contracting? I, I, I just, I don't know, but I think that would be a valuable thing, thing to research, at least, at least from our staff perspective because, you know, I, I, I get this, this whole index about availability and that sort of thing, but, but, you know, that's really just, just when you talk to, talk to somebody and, you know, they may have no work when you talk to them, and they may be super busy when you talk to them, and next week you would get a completely different answer, and that's, that's kind of.
Yeah, I think uh, no, I think that's a good point. One thing I would say is that um, first, um, on the side of looking at minority-owned, women-owned busi- minority and woman-owned businesses or other businesses who used to do work with the city and no longer do it, I think that's a great avenue for uh, follow-up research on any disparity study. We have some of that, although it's not uh, it's not tailored to that subset of the population specifically. But as part of the in-depth interviews, uh, we talk about, you get a sense of difficulties that um, that firms face uh, in working on city contracts, and also why they might elect not to work on city contracts. So there's some of those firms, some of that, some of those insights available uh, as part of that analysis. But again, it's not focused specifically on uh, on that particular group. So a, a more focused research on them might, might be valuable.
Yeah, and I think it also goes to, to the type of the contract too, because if it's like a construction contract, it's gonna be low bid is low bid.
Right.
But if it's a service contract, it typically goes, it's a little bit more, a little bit more mushy where it's, it's best value. So you have a little bit more uh, ability to, to influence it. But um, you know, again, I go back to the construction side of it. If, if, you know, you bid on four contracts and you're not low on any of them, well, it might be better to, to instead build somewhere else, you know, build Taco Bells instead of fire stations. I mean, that's.
Yeah, but also part of it is just, um, because so many of those opportunities don't necessarily come as prime contractors, but a lot of these smaller businesses, minority and woman-owned businesses are looking to get onto construction projects as subcontractors.
Capturing them in that, right? Because they're not working for the city.
We are. We capture subcontract as well.
You are capturing subcontract.
We are. So the idea then becomes not so much, how do you compete and get lower pricing? It's how, why are they, why are they potentially excluded from networks that uh, prime contractors are using to get subcontractors? And how can the city better encourage their networking with prime contractors and those relationships so that they can be, become engaged with, with the process? So it works at different levels, but um, I, I think, I think the research you suggested would definitely be valuable and to figure out exactly among those, among those firms who are no longer working for the city, you might get some great insights about what can the city do better.
All right. Aaron?
That's just what I was gonna touch on is, as a city, and the numbers seem to reflect how we encouraging minorities. You know the availability, but if our reputation precedes or discourages minorities to actually come and bid towards the city, then you'll continue to have a disparity. So I think it, it goes hand in hand, you know, how, how can we better uh, you know, be more specific in the types of contracts we award? But also, how do we step out there and say, hey, these are the contracts that are available and encourage more?
Get the info.
Right, get the info, get more um, minorities to step up, encourage them to get involved in the process. And I think, you know, we, we've, we had a reputation of being closed. We, we changed that reputation to being open for business. So I think it's really um, becoming upon us to really take the, the leadership role and get out there and actually go towards the small businesses, minorities, all businesses, and say, hey, we are open for business. Work well with minority business council, say, we're gonna have to be through this process to, to do better in these numbers because these numbers are, for me, are alarming.
Okay, yeah, Aaron, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. But, you know, that, though, that's a definite direction that we have to go. But if I can ask Taylor, uh, can you just give us a Cliff Notes version about some of the initiatives, you know, under your direction, have been going on over the years, to improve the availability? Contractors Institute and some of the other initiatives that the city has been, you know, working on. Granted, we got some work to do, but I, we can say that over the years, we've been trying to move that dial. And I agree with you a hundred percent, uh, Aaron, that we gotta, you know, we're op- open for business for everybody.
So, thank you, Mayor. Uh, which is absolutely true. It uh, I tell you, it featured in, in, in my interview here three and a half years ago, in my first, first meeting with then Deputy City Manager Hanson, now City Manager Hanson. It was clear to me that this was going to be a priority for us. And so I am uh, thankful to see the recommendations that Samir brought forward because, because uh, a number of these things are already either in process or in production for us. Most notably, the debundling piece in the construction space, um, starting with a, uh, with a local uh, minority-owned uh, concrete provider, concrete company. We were able to make what was a pretty exciting award for us because it was the first time we were able to leverage your bond waiver, uh, your bond waiver uh, sort of uh, rules that allowed us to waive bonding on, on construction contracts to award to a minority-owned business in a pri- uh, in a prime capacity uh, for an annual services con- uh, construction contract. We use that as a model, as our debundling model, and have since awarded uh, two more minority-owned businesses annual services agreements that are now in their second term in one woman-owned business. So that's one and a half million dollars worth of construction work to women and minority-owned businesses in a prime capacity that we did not have. And that, again, that's, that flows right out of, out of the sort of programs that Samir is uh, is talking about. So uh, this is, we're, we're looking for new, new ways to be innovative in this space every day and appreciate your support in that effort.
Yeah, Mr. Hanson.
So, uh, Mayor, members of council, um, this uh, period of this study was twelve to seventeen. concerted effort has been underway now for, for a solid five years, and we've completed uh, two thousand and eighteen. And so I would uh, ask a question to Samir and say, uh, do we maintain a five-year running average? Is that a standard pro- process to go forward to take a look at how we are measuring up to our availability? Should we replace the outer year twelve, which I, having looked at the data, was pretty dismal in effect, and replace it with eighteen? And then if that's how it works, yes or no, or, and how it should happen, how often should we take a, you know, bring you back and say, update our availability?
I'll stay. I don't need to go.
Well, yeah, I know you like, I know, hey, you come from California, so it can't be that bad. But the reality, or Denver, um, the reality is, what we wanna do is we wanna ensure our data is current, that our efforts are recognized, that the, my, that the impacts that we're making to how we're contracting, that when we come to the council and we say, look, we, we might wanna set aside to do this, and we might wanna change the dynamics because the Procurement Act currently inhibits us because it's low bid. And, and I can't get best value. It got, it got erased in committee this year, uh, again in the General Assembly, even though we go up there and we advocate for it. So, you know, in order to take these steps in an environment called the Dillon State and having the rules that allows us to do these things, the questions that uh, you know, that John Moss was asking about and, and, and Jim Wood was asking about, legal sufficiency are very strong conversations that the council's gotta have underneath, you know, we gotta have a good grounding before I come to you and say, look, I, I do wanna do set-asides for not as specific as that would be, but some derivative thereof that would improve the opportunity for MWO's to, to participate.
Yeah, so although it speaks against my business interests, I wouldn't suggest that the city does a rolling disparity study.
Okay.
You know, I think that uh, a more, a more practical plan or proposal might be to monitor participation year by year. And that's much less, that's much more cost-effective to do in a rolling way or annually and in a way that's consistent with the disparity study. And then to the councilman's point earlier, availability, because it is a snapshot in time, that's the piece that's expensive to do, time-consuming to do, and something that probably needs to be updated more than anything else every five years or so.
Okay.
But to update availability in a rolling fashion, that's going to become cost prohibitive very quickly.
Okay.
So that, that would be my suggestion, something where you're monitoring participation and then also committing to updating the look at availability to see if that's changed every five years or so is probably what makes sense, and doing a full-blown disparity study every five years or so is probably makes sense.
Yeah, Serena?
Taylor, are there any best practices that you have seen that are effective during your tenure? You know, working with the Minority Business Council that engages minorities to participate with the city more?
Admittedly, uh, Councilman, that, that continues to be a, to be a challenge for us. That's one of the things um, that we are, that we are looking for this study to sort of help us improve. There are certainly best practices in the marketplace that we are leveraging to reach the broadest possible pool of, of contractors. The, I will tell you, what, and in fairness, that has had an impact for us. If you look at the, to Mr. Hanson's point, if you look at the first two years under review and the last three years under review, you'll see um, our participation ramp up considerably in both, uh, by both percentage and dollar volume over the last three years. And so we believe that we are reaching a broader pool of contractors. The reality is, though, um, we don't know, we're, we're, we're leaning. The reality is, though, we don't know, we're leaning on this study to help us better understand why we see the same faces on bid day every time, and why we don't see some of the other vendors with whom we are in contact. And so, really, this will be a Rebecca and Laveri issue, but I will tell you, having worked pretty closely with both of these ladies, it is their intent to sort of be back with better data on that topic.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yep, Jess.
I just, thank you very much, and I just hope when we go into the retreat that this is, gets to occupy a lot of our time, because I think we need to really discuss where we wanna be moving forward, so.
Yeah, and I think periodic, you know, updates about what we're doing, you know, would definitely, you know, be in order, and, you know, but once again, to communicate to the public that we take this seriously and that we are moving forward in a very vigorous way, you know, to, you know, get that level playing field for everybody. Anybody else? Thank you so much, it was very valuable, we really appreciate it.
And I just wanna take a moment to thank the City of Virginia Beach as well. I know I said it last time as well, but it is a lot of work for the organization, so Taylor, Taylor in particular, and Laveri in particular, really helped out throughout the entire process, and we can't do studies like this successfully without good clients, so thank you.
It was a good team effort, thank you very much. Thanks, Samir.
Thanks.
Good travels.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mayor, members of council, we're gonna swap out the teams here, and we're gonna bring in Chief Severa, and he's gonna provide you his 2018 roll-up, we call it the ComStat Report, and you got a copy of that on Friday, and there, I don't know how many surprises he'll bring to us, but it looks to me, Howard, you flipping charts for the chief?
No, the rest of the staff's on the way in, sir, they're hung up with the staff.
Hopefully we'll have a really informal council room that actually works.
Thank you.
Do you have an extra handout? Which I will...
Thank you, Billy.
Explain.
I just forgot to tell you.
Thank you, that's for sure.
I need to tell you, but I forgot.
How you doing?
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Hanson, Mr. Styles. Twice a year, we come before this body to, a snapshot as to our crime stats for the year, but more important than that, what we are doing in the community. We stole a saying from Bill Bratton, Bill Bratton is the former Commissioner in New York City, and that is that cops count and things matter. Our first slide is numbers. Numbers speak, pretty much speak for themselves. You'll see there are two increases, and one increase is the number of homicides, and I will get to that very briefly. The second increase has to do with what we call malicious assaults. Now, when we look at malicious assaults or aggravated assaults, we break them down into two categories, domestic and non-domestic, not that either one is any less egregious to an individual, but we really hone in on the non-domestic, that is, that are the street-level aggravated assaults that we have. What I will get to in a few moments is to let you know that we did see an increase this year over last year, we saw an increase last year over the previous year into the number of shooting cases that we're working throughout the city. And this is not unusual with what's going on around the country. What we say is, everybody's got a gun, and that's what we are beginning to experience even in our own community. What I do wanna show you is that for this past year, property crime is down 10.6% overall, but more importantly, or as important, I'm sorry, violent crime, or property crime, what we did was we looked at a 10-year snapshot of our property crime stats, you will see a downward trend over X number of years. What's really important is if we look at this downward trend, we could study year after year, or year by year, but that's kinda like looking at your bank statement every day, and you see things go up and things go down, and I made money and I lost money. In this particular case, what we like to do is look at a trend, and how are we interacting with the trend? You will see, we're very proud of the fact that we've had a downward trend. Next, we wanna show you violent crime, and again, it was down for one year, but let's look at the trend. 1999 to 2018, we do see, in about year 2006, we had an increase till about year 2006, we redesigned how we do business in the police department around that time. We redesigned what we call the Big Six crimes throughout the city, and what we did was we took our efforts and our energies and directed them in a certain direction to impact street crime, violent crime, property crime, and you will see that all of those have been decreasing. As a matter of fact, during this time period, total Part One crime is down 10%, but again, I wanna go to the trend, and the trend will show you where we've been since 1999. Now, I do want you to know that if we took a trend of motor vehicle summonses and what we called a low-level misdemeanor arrests that have to do with order maintenance, you will also see that during this time period, they were on a downward trend. That didn't happen by accident, as I said earlier, that happened because we were looking at re-engineering how we do our work in policing, what is the most important aspect of policing for our citizens, what is the best thing to increase our quality of life, to stabilize our neighborhoods, to increase economic development, and to increase our tourism base every year, and I will get to that in a moment also. So we're pretty secure in the fact that we've seen a downward trend in violent crime, a downward trend in property crime, overall crime, and that's where we are today. I think we're at about the 1964 rate for crime in our city.
Mr. Moss?
Yes, sir.
These are impressive numbers, and I think if we normalized it per 10,000 populations, you can see that those numbers would even be more impressive. It's phenomenal.
Yes, sir. And that is why, you know, when we say we have the same crime rate that we did in 1964, remember how small the city was? So the numbers speak for themselves, and I think what it really shows is, is that once we spoke with the division and the precinct commanders and the detective commanders on how we wanted to re-engineer, how we do our business, you could see that model has been successful in this and in other ways in delivering our service. As I said, homicides were up this year. Actually, we have 18 homicides that we worked, there was one additional one on 264 that the state police worked. They will be included when we do our numbers to the Uniform Crime Report, but for us, we worked 18 homicides. What I wanna show is that we look at this trend, and it looks like if we're between 14 and 22 homicides a year, that's about where we have been, give or take one or two standard deviations off the mean. That is really the numbers that we look at. As you can see, one year we had four. That year, retired Chief Jay Cox was at a meeting, and he mentioned they had four homicides, and one of his cohorts from a large city said, was that on Saturday night? And he said, no, that was for the year. But then the next year, we had 27. So do we say, wow, we had, what, a 600% increase? No, those were the two aberrations. If you look at the numbers across the board, it's between 14, 22. Not that we take any of that lightly, and again, we know that four homicides this year were domestic-related, we don't take that any lightly than we would a stranger homicide. It's just those cases have a different reaction from the citizens at large. We know that X number of homicides last year were due to disputes, a couple were due to bad drug deals, and we worked through every case as it's the most important case that we have. We also have, by the way, a cold case unit, and they have been phenomenal in clearing some cases that are 30 and 40 years old. And we looked at the same thing with the aggravated assaults, but we do want you to know that this year, we did have 36 shooting victims throughout the city, and our officers are beginning to come in contact with more and more weapons. You know, I did make the comment, I think it was this past summer, about logical gun regulation, and that caused quite an interesting response back. I think we had 12 or 13 citizens come on open-mic night and talk about Second Amendment. I won't go there today.
That's good, chief.
That's good. Speaking of guns, we took off 879 guns last year in our city. 288 of those were safekeeping. That is, we either go to a citizen and say, do you have a weapon in the house, for a series of reasons that the law would allow us, to ask the citizen to voluntarily turn over the weapon they do. Or in some cases, citizens say, there's a gun in my house and I really would like the police to have it for a short period of time for safekeeping. The rest of the weapons, we took off for various sundry reasons. Some of them were connected with crimes, some individuals had an illegal weapon on their possession, and so, and in others, they were taken because they were part of the evidence of a crime. That is, we recovered the gun from another crime. Can we go back? I just wanna talk about this particular photo. Young officer, right after midnight, made a motor vehicle stop. He was able to realize through probable cause that there was narcotics violations in the vehicle, they were able to do a search right there at the scene, under the Carroll doctrine of the vehicle. We were able to take off from that individual a large number, a large amount of narcotics, as well as an AK-47 with an extended magazine that was fully loaded, a spear gun, which was also loaded, and numerous rounds of ammunition from this individual. We were able to charge the individual for possession of a firearm by a convicted felon, ammunition by a convicted felon, stun weapon by a convicted felon, controlled substance with the firearm, possession of a controlled substance Schedule 1 and 2, and a few other minor charges. The bottom line is, this individual had been arrested numerous times, has been convicted numerous times, and we can only conjecture that we might have stopped a violent crime from happening that night. You know why we like to talk about this? We had 262,000 citizen contacts last year, that's calls for service, that's traffic stops, that's pedestrian stops, that's arrests, and as I say everywhere we go, nobody, nobody calls the cops because they're having a good day. They call the cops because there's a problem. 262,000 times, our officers came in contact with the citizen, and we are the only entity of government that is allowed to use force. I always like to say that as magnificent as our naval bases are in our city, their area of control ends at the wire. We are outside the wire, we are the only entity in government that has permission of the citizens to use force. We used force 617 times last year, of the 262,000 times we were in contact with the citizen. I want you to know that we track force a little different than a lot of other jurisdictions. If you unholster your weapon and point it at an individual, it's considered a use of force, even if the weapon isn't fired. If you basically put your hands on another human being, it's considered use of force. We had a grand total of 99 citizen complaints for all the police activity that we did, and only 20 of those had to do with our officers using force. So what you might hear in the narrative across the country about police use of force in your police department, our officers are highly trained, they have excellent equipment to their training, and the most important thing is they're extremely self-disciplined when it comes to delivering the service they deliver. As a matter of fact, I would like to put this maybe in a little better circumstance. Not too long ago, NFL Commissioner Roger Goodell made a comment about a certain play that happened in a game where perhaps the referees didn't call a certain pass interference foul.
Go Saints!
And what he said was, we know our officials are human, we also know that they are officiating a game that moves very quickly, and they have to make staff decisions under difficult circumstances, and they're not gonna get it right every time. I appreciate that comment, because your police officers are working in an environment that moves a whole lot quicker than, I know Bruce Smith was just here, he's an NFL Hall of Famer, and sir, I know you played in the NFL, but when a police officer has to come upon someone who's armed with a gun or a knife, that's a very fast-moving situation, and we don't get to call timeout, and we don't get to go to instant replay. I like to bring that up, because the next particular slide is something we are always extremely proud of.
Did you like, approach him, Mr. Moss?
Yes, sir.
That's a phenomenal slide, that last one.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything to share with our citizens to put that in context? Because I've heard many of us travel around a lot of places, and I don't think anyone, I can't name another place that would put up a slide like that. I don't think people realize just how phenomenal that really is.
We will put all of this out on our Facebook page, on the city Facebook page, and at any given time, sir, if you have a constituency that would like us to come and describe exactly who we are, what we do, and how we do play the game, we'll be there for you. You know that.
What I was referencing is, is there something we can say, if you were to look at a comparable city, your city's over a million, over 500,000, you would see, on average, 2,000 uses of force, you'd see 10% complaints, I mean, this is what I think, when you look at that, that speaks a lot to the professionalism of our police force in a huge way.
And if I can say, a lot of jurisdictions do not break it down quite in the way that we do. We do it for two reasons, we want total transparency to our citizens, total transparency to our elected officials, and we're very proud of this. And again, this goes back to, nothing beats training, internal discipline of the officers, and direct supervision from that first-line supervisor. We all know that those of us who are sitting here set policy, set operational procedures, but the culture that's from the first-line supervisor eats policy for lunch. So we have to really let you know that those first-line supervisors, those lieutenants and the captains in the precincts are doing an absolute phenomenal job, which is why we have numbers such as this. Yes, sir.
Aaron, the last slide. Out of 264,000 citizen contacts, which is great, thank you, thank you all for this, sir. Are those numbers broken down even further to see race or demographics?
What we do every year when we make, when we do arrests, we have all our arrests and all of our summonses broken down by race, by age, and by what we call home of record. We present this to the Human Rights Commission every year, I will be more than happy to get you the exact numbers. I will tell you that, and this all came about the Human Rights Commission after the incident in 89, and that is why we present before the Human Rights Commission multiple times a year. For example, we know that in our community, our community's 21% African-American, and we look at our arrest statistics, we say, well, we have 34% African-American arrests, but then we filter out arrests of folks from all of the neighboring jurisdictions. And what we find is, in the region, the African-American population's 34%, 34, we're at 35, it's about 1% off. But I'll be more than happy to get all that data for you and anyone else in council. And we do that, sir, again, transparency to our community, transparency to our elected officials, and the third reason, we're very proud of it. We bring this up without incident. Again, the subject with a gun in his hand, a gun on his person, our officers 16 times last year interacted with an individual, we're able to bring that potential violent situation to a close without incident. In other words, they did not have to use a certain level of force. Now, we know that two weeks ago, we had an officer-involved shooting in a certain area of the city, and again, that's because it's a fast-moving environment, things change, and even though we have the procedures, we have the training, we have the protocols, the other individual is the one who really sets the stage for how that officer has to interact.
And Mr. Wood?
And I appreciate this, because this is a good slide that you tend to put up every single time, and this is good information, but I, you know, just wanting to make sure that we're not sending a message that, trying to put this the right way here.
Yes, sir.
We don't want to encourage people to greet the police with guns, because it doesn't always end this way.
Yes, and not only that, internally, when we speak about this, we say, in these particular cases, the officers had the tactical advantage, and we always work towards having, once you have the tactical advantage, you can slow the situation down, but if you don't, in that particular case the other day, that officer was just surprised, he did not have that tactical advantage. But we can tell you that you're absolutely right, I would love to tell the general public, when the police come, put the gun down. I wanted to talk about our crisis intervention. You know, for a number of years, we have been training, we're now about 60% of the officers in our department who are highly trained in crisis intervention, that is, dealing with individuals that might have a mental illness or a mental episode at that time. We have now taken this response that we have, and it's a response from the police to a situation, but then it takes in a number of other systems that we have to deal with, the medical system, the mental health system, and this past year, we... And this past year, we started a, a new program with our, um, Friends and Human Services, and it's a co-response that we have. We have a police officer, and we have a mental health emergency worker in the same car at the time responding to the scene, so that they could offer the services to that individual, get them out of the criminal justice system into the mental health system, but it's instantaneous that it's moving. Now, it still takes time, we still have other issues that we're dealing with, uh, and some of it's on a state level, and we're working through that. Um, and I won't get into too much on that until we have some success in that. But what I wanted you to know was that this program, this idea, has been so successful that we are going to double the size of the individuals. We're going to have two units as opposed to one. I asked Madam Secretary, Dinet Smith, to come, because this idea that we had, um, was at a high-level meeting that she and I were in, it was in the hallway walking to get, um, some water from the water fountain, and we just said, what if we paired up someone from, uh, the mental health world with the police officers who are responding, and the next thing you know, this, uh, project is, is underway. It has been extremely successful. I also asked Sarah Carrato to be here, because she is our, um, uh, liaison, she's the one who sets up the, the scheduling and the system between DHS and, and the police department. So I wanted them both recognized, because this is something I think that, that many cities may be, uh, envious of, that we could come up with an idea, walking down a hallway, and the next thing you know, because of the culture of how we do business in the city, it's now, uh, an operational component, and it's working.
That's awesome. Mr. Wood?
That, that, that's really unique, and I, I, I like that idea. I mean, the CIT has done an incredibly good job over the years, and the, the fact that you have mental health experts partnered with, with the police department, I, I think is phenomenally good. It's all obviously voluntary, though, right? I mean, the, the citizens still have, have to agree to it. Occasionally at public meetings, people come here who are in, in distress, and it's, I've often thought it would be nice if there were somebody from Human Services, you know, just there who could potentially offer assistance to, to people who, who are very clearly in distress at, at these meetings, as opposed to just having the police kind of have to walk them out of the, out of the building. I think that would be, um, that would be something that would be good, too.
That's a good idea.
Before we go to the next one, um, at this time, I, I want you to know, and, and we had an extra handout, that would, as a police agency, we understand where, where we are with council's goals, stabilizing neighborhoods, economic development, a, a world-class resort area, and we, we, um, we do a lot of analysis of all the, the crimes that we have in the city. As I, I usually present a map of where the higher-end crimes are. I did not do it this year, but we did give you the map. This is, this is a series of shootings that we had, um, in the Beach Borough last year. There's one that's not on here, that was at the 800 block of, uh, 16th Street. We analyzed each one. Um, we made an arrest in a number of these cases. We wanted you to know, as, as we always show, that the majority of what we have, what we deal with, and, and I say the Beach Borough instead of just the Oceanfront, really deals between 16th and 21st Street. That's where we have the majority of the issues that we have to deal with. And the, um, commanders at the Oceanfront now have, uh, the leeway of supplemental staffing during certain times at night. So far this year since September, we have spent in overtime, this is since September, this is the quiet time of the year, about $40,000 just in some of the parking lot areas that we have in and around 18th and 19th Street. We're trying to come up with other ways to, um, be able to, to enhance safety and security in that area. But we did want you to, to know that, you know, a lot, a lot of these cases that we're dealing with have to do with individuals who have a weapon. This is not your, your, the typical quote tourist, um, time. These are individuals who, like, we know on July 4th, someone just decided to shoot a weapon in, into a crowd, and we had six individuals who were injured, um, by gunfire. And we are, we are, we cleared a number of these cases, um, and we're probably going to clear the one at 17th and Atlantic. Deputy Chief Gallagher, I know that the detectives are working hard, we have some great leads on that particular case. I wanted you to know how important we take this, because we know that, um, I believe that the, uh, statistics last year from CVV were 19 million tourists came through our city either date, as either daytime or, um, overnight guests. So that's, um, that's a lot of folks every day that come through, and we understand the importance of that Oceanfront area. We did want you to know some, some particular numbers as to what our mobile co-response team is doing. Some of it, I, I had to get briefed on what is, was all this mean. The bottom line is, of 115 cases that they worked during that short period of time, they were able to, to, um, give someone services in almost every case, even including the ones where the individual went, um, to voluntary, impatient, or to a private provider. We never had that contact before, that the individual would, um, be able to be turned over to a private provider, which takes the responsibility off of us in government and, uh, puts it over to that private individual. But because we have the DH worker, DHS worker, right with us at that time, they're able to provide that level of service. Drugs are everywhere. I, I don't know what else to tell you. Councilman Moss, I know you wanted some, how do we compare the 17? We don't usually look year to year, because these cases that we work are self-generated. There may be a case that takes six months, and then we say, well, wha, what's the amount of drugs that we confiscated? It may be a small amount, but still it was important at that time. I do want you to know that of the important, the important numbers that you will see, we confiscated 1,700 grams of heroin in 2018. That's up from 560 in 2017. Those detectives are doing a phenomenal job in finding the heroin. We've also confiscated, um, 3,500 grams of methamphetamine. Marijuana is always out there. Um, what we're finding, one of the issues with marijuana is that some states now have legalized it, so people that, in those particular states grow their marijuana like they're allowed to under law, they package the marijuana, they put it in boxes, they ship it over to Virginia Beach, and then we have to deal with it on our end. One of the other important things that I, I want you to know, this is our human trafficking rescues. You know, we, we deal with prostitution, and, um, there was a time in policing when prostitution was you just arrest the prostitute involved. We realized, over the course of time, many of the individuals don't want to be there. That's not what their chosen lot in life is. So we've re, we've, again, re-engineered how we do this business, and our, um, officers in SID, as well as the officers on the street, are now, um, working these cases with the intention of basically rescuing the individual. So we do call them rescues.
Before we go back, I just have one question. Is all the currency seizures relative to drug arrests?
Yes, yes. And, um, one of the things about currency seizures, that's the byproduct of the case. It's not that the, that the drugs are the byproduct of the currency. We look at the drugs first, and then we go after the currency after that.
But I want people to know, watching, this isn't like North Carolina where the small businessman had, took him three years to get his money back.
No, no, this is, this, this is an individual has X amount of dope, and, and we make the arrest.
Thank you very much.
We also have the only, uh, drug take-back program in the region where you could drop your drugs off, your prescription drugs, excuse me, on a daily basis in any precinct. And, um, as it, it shows, last year, 4,500 pounds. Since we started the program, about 11,000 pounds. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just wonderful that you do this. Have you thought about maybe putting one at the hospital?
Um, the only reason why we can't at the hospital is that we don't have control of it. The reason why we do it at the precincts is we have immediate control. I know that some of the pharmacies are looking at actually having their own, so the hospital can have its own, and then they could transport, uh, the prescription drugs to us for, um, disposal. You know how proud we are of, of our community policing efforts throughout the entire city. You know that in some areas of the city, we've worked for about a decade in, um, breaking barriers down, in open-up lines of communication. Some of it has not been easy, some of it's been, um, it's been fantastically difficult, because when, when you have that first meeting and, and it's oh, so negative, and then two years later, we're sitting down and we're having lunch together, it, it really shows exactly what your police agency is, is, is devoted to. I've said it many times, George Washington said it, so I'll quote him, "Without the support of the citizens, you will accomplish nothing." We know that. So we have the support of our citizens. I've said to our officers, in the latest video that we sent out, we have support of our senior leadership in our city, the four deputy city managers and our city manager, we have the support of our elected officials, and most importantly, we have the support of our citizens. This is one of the reasons why. Just like to take a moment to, uh, mention our good friend, MPO Kelvin Bailey, who passed away while he was working this past year. We did provide him the, uh, and his family, the honors that he deserved. Uh, he was an excellent police officer, well-known in the community, and, um, I just thought it was appropriate that we mention him during this presentation. Mr. Mayor, do we have any questions?
Any questions? Rosemary?
I just, this is a fantastic report, and out of everything that we do, if people don't feel safe, you can't really accomplish anything. So for our citizens to be able to feel safe, it, it just gives them the freedom to go out and be the best learners, be the best entrepreneurs, be the best parents, them to be the best, because they don't have to live in fear. And they're creating that culture of safety is really what it is. I love the council, we all appreciate everything y'all did.
And from our take, it also goes beyond the police. We had a meeting the other day with, with some of our council members, uh, related fire and EMS and 911. We truly have a system. Yeah, we give each other a, a bit of a hard time. I, I know that Deputy City Manager continually tells me if I scored five points higher on the test, I could have been a fireman instead of a police officer, I know that. But, but really, we do have an excellent system, and, and it shows completely through, especially in an area like that beachfront.
Ms. Henley?
Just to remind you that down in the county, tomorrow is the First Responders Appreciation Day, and we expect you all for lunch.
Yes, we will be there. Yes, ma'am.
And y'all can come, too.
Oh, thank you.
Well, I think I can speak on behalf of a grateful council and a grateful public for the job that you do every day 24/7, and also that we got some of the, you, we do have a marvelous network of, you know, police, fire, 911, Commonwealth attorney, EMS, sheriff, and, uh, you know, just think about it. Anybody can take out a cell phone 24/7, call 911, and somebody's going to come who is highly trained, highly professional, and a point of pride for our city. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. And Chief? Thank you, sir. Good report.
Thank you. You. So, uh, members of council, uh, next we have Taylor Adams, and, uh, he's coming back to, uh, provide you an update on our progress to, uh, consummate the TCC Hotel, uh, project. As you recall, uh, we came to you, uh, before Christmas and gave you a pre-briefing about, uh, the results, uh, and a, uh, and a recommendation from the Development Authority and move forward with this transaction. We thought that it may have been undervaluing the, uh, the site at, uh, adjacent to Princess Anne, across from Landstown, next to, uh, TCC. And I'm pleased to report that, uh, we've had some, uh, a lot of hard work, a lot of collaboration. Uh, we've kept the mayor informed in this, uh, in this process, uh, and we're pleased to bring you, uh, what we think is a way forward and, uh, and a opportunity to bring, uh, a new, uh, industry, if you will, hotel, uh, into the Princess Anne, uh, District, Landstown Commons, and, and help support, uh, what has been a miraculous growth, uh, story for the city of Virginia Beach, uh, here in the area that also supports municipal centers. So, Taylor, please.
Uh, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor Council. Um, before I dive into this, I do want to, um, as you will see here in just a moment, this, the, the, the beginning of this, uh, project, it act, it well predates my time in economic development. So quickly, if I could, I'd like to thank the city manager and my deputy city manager, as well as the, the team in economic development and the city, and the city attorney's office for their, uh, for their assistance in pulling this together, and also bringing me up to speed on the history of this project. As Mr. Hanson mentioned, this is, this is a property that is, that is sort of on the Princess Anne corridor. It is actually, uh, from a council, council district standpoint, uh, we, we checked this today, it is on a little finger of the Centerville District that comes over and grabs, uh, Princess Anne. So, uh, the, uh, our intended outcome here, this project's basically is intended to deliver hotel product to what is currently an under, underserved portion of the city, particularly when you look at the activities at, uh, at Tidewater Community College, as well as our own, uh, recreational facilities in that part of the city. This process was, uh, was initiated in July of 13. RevPAR, what is that? Revenue per available room. That's a stu, a study that was run, uh, in August of 15. An RFP was advertised in May of 2017. You all were briefed, uh, in September, this, the exact date, September 5th of 2017, and coming out of that, uh, we began a conversation with Harmony Hospitality Incorporated to see if we could get to a, to a sales agreement. To talk about the project a little bit, uh, we are, we are proposing a two-phase project. The first phase would be, uh, would be for the sale of 3.96 acres at $578,000 per acre. That is the appraised value of the real estate. We would build 110-room, um, all-suites hotel at an estimated value of $10 million. There is a, a proposed restaurant out parcel that, uh, that would also be developed, uh, between 4,500 and 5,500 square feet, again, an estimated value of, of 1.55 million. We are, uh, there, we are optimistic that this, uh, that this project will be successful, and there is a proposed second phase and an option that we would recommend extending to the developer, uh, which would be for another two and a half acres, um, at the same price, and then an additional, um, an additional hotel, um, as well as, uh, a conference, for some conferencing facility that could, could utilize the, sort of the, the new product that was on the site. We, um, we, uh, the city proposes to participate in infrastructure improvements primarily, uh, on the sewer side to, uh, um, mostly onsite, small offsite, and in an amount not to exceed 1.35 million. Now, we anticipate that it will be well less, and it, but it is important to note, we've, we built in what we believe is a max value of both phases of development there, so that we could show you the rev, what we believe the returns on, um, return on investment could be based on the, the fiscal impact work that was done in management services.
Mr. Moss?
Before we move on, and what's the length of the option of which the 578K price is guaranteed? Is that two years, five years, 10 years?
It's two, it's a, um, I thought it was two, but it's a, so it, it's a five-year option, um, but, uh, but then what it would do is, uh, there's an advance in there. So in the event that we get an offer in the meantime from another, um, another developer, three, thanks, three, a three-year option, in the event that a, uh, that a, that another developer came forward wishing to develop the parcel on that point, then, then, then it would advance the option on this considerably.
At the end of the five years, does that require council action to extend, or can that be administratively extended?
I don't know the answer to that.
It would require complex action to extend it. It could be exercised without further.
Does a 1.35 million tax expenditure from the water and sewer fund, which is enterprise fund, is that going to be an infusion from economic development out of the cigarette taxes, or is that cost going to be borne by the people who pay their water and sewer bills?
We, that, that ordinance is, is under draft, and, uh, we...
What is the expectation? Is that going to be spread to the people who pay sewer bills every month? Or is it going to be cash?
I couldn't speak to that.
We, we expect that we're going to deduct the cost of the real estate against that as part of the ordinance, and we'll reflect that as a net, uh, against the sale price at full market value, and that was kind of the arrangement we made with them.
Very good, just trying to understand the details.
Yes, sir.
And does the 1.35 million represent the total, uh, expenditure for the, both Phase One and Phase Two, or just Phase One?
No, sir. We believe that, that is the total amount that we are proposing for both phases.
And we've made no representations or expectations that there would be additional money coming forth with Phase Two?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Ms. Henley?
When this whole thing started several years ago, I think that the, the big hook that I liked was the partnership with TCC, that they were going to be offering hospitality courses, and that these, this hotel would be participating as part of their, their... and that this hotel would be participating as part of their instruction. Is that still a part of this deal?
That is not in the sale agreement that we are proposing at this point. However, there may be the opportunity for that in the future, but that's...
If I might, just to help you all, this parcel right here belongs to TCC. This is where they intend to build a workforce development facility. They're going to expand beyond just the tourism and the hotel industry to support that. I think what happened in the conversation that was originally, the premise for linking a hotel to this site was, wouldn't it be nice to have it this close proximity to classes, et cetera? But being a tourism town, there's hotels all across the city that, internships and availability for them to find work and as part of their internship program is available throughout the city. So, I met with both TCC and the Real Estate Foundation for the community college. We discussed that. They understood they didn't want to invest and worked diligently on that. We talked about being able to accommodate an opportunity for them to have a better entrance, rather than coming around here through the back entrance and hitting this, but to have a grander entrance into their campus, having just completed a brand-new student center built over the lake. They just finished their biology building. And so, with the foundation's blessing, they allowed us to move forward with this for the hotels that it will provide to, not only the campus, but also to entire development of Princess Anne Commons. And so, we're now currently starting our work on the site plan development to orchestrate a media break here and a grand entrance to our TCC campus.
What's going to be, there's not going to be any entrance from Princess Anne Road directly into these hotels, or these parcels?
Negative.
No, ma'am.
They are going to enter through an entrance probably right here. And you'll see a site layout in about 30 seconds.
That's right.
Just so that, I mean, it seems like a lot of things have changed since we started talking about this concept of a hotel there, so...
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, John.
You know, they're building a hotel at Broad Street and Independence Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
Which was totally acquired by private sector money in a place where there's existing hotels. And that, as far as I know, all there was was a $250,000 grant for landscaping. I don't know why that is, but nonetheless, that's what I understand. So, I'm trying to just, could you say "underutilized", which means there's a market gap between demand and supply?
In this portion of the city, yes, sir.
Right, well, I know we didn't do much for that hotel at Broad Street and Independence, that we gave away $10 million for the hotel and office complex for City View, which hasn't even started yet. So, I'm trying to wonder, when you say, I don't care, the deal is one thing, but the assessment that's underutilized means you've done some kind of market analysis. And I'm trying to understand, someone who bought much more expensive property at Broad Street and Independence Boulevard with no public assistance, building their own parking, doing their own stuff, and yet here, we're having to do a tax expenditure, in effect, to make it happen. So, how is it that there's a gap between the market and revenue that we have to have a tax expenditure? Or maybe we shouldn't be saying "underutilized", meaning we want to create a supply to create a demand? But that's different from underutilized capacity, underutilized demand.
Yes, sir.
So, one caveat, so it's underserved, this is an underserved geographic market in our city, predominantly because of Princess Anne Athletic Complex. RevPAR reference in there is the actual, there is RevPAR.
Right.
RevPAR is the name of the company that did the analysis based off the market demand. They did two iterations of it, the last one was 2015.
But if the market demand was real, it could cover all the cost of its construction. The fact that we're having to induce with this 1.35 million means the market demand relative to revenue won't cover all the capital costs.
The capital investment here is for sewer service that is not at the site.
Oh, I understand that. But my point is, it's anyone else would be providing sewer to their site.
The town center hotel does have sewer service at that site. But they are two different markets.
Yes, but it's not under...
Most of these customers are staying in Greenbrier Hotels.
Oh, I know, I read that report.
Right.
I'm just saying, it's clearly, this is about creating supply for a demand we want to capture that the market price can't get to if we don't provide that money.
Sure, it was a negotiated one.
Yep, all right, just making sure the public understands what we're doing.
Ms. Henley.
Just from my memory, but I know when we, when, I didn't look for it, but the property on the other side of Princess Anne Road, the Spence Farm, was first approved for rezoning and housing. That was to include a hotel.
That's correct.
Now, the last time they came in and redid their plan, they did away with the hotel. So, they are no longer planning. I wonder why they decided not to build a hotel there.
No market demand, no revenue, they didn't get 1.35 million dollars.
They're making pretty good money with their sales and their phase on. And residential is underserved too, and they're making a good buck, and we're pleased to have them there. You know, there are very few areas here with ACUs in place that allows us to construct hotels. The opportunity to put Twin Towers in here and a small conferencing between them is a magnanimous opportunity for our medical village, our athletic village, our academic village, and quite frankly, for all the municipal villages that we're continuing to grow down here.
And I agree with that. I mean, I've heard many people from this area bemoan the fact that there's no place for their relatives to stay close by. And I know with the medical complexes that there is a need. So, I just wanted to make certain that there wasn't still that planned hotel on the other side. I thought that they had done away with that, but...
And if you'll indulge me just one more second, for you, Mr. Moss, our team with me on board, we called Hyatt, I think it was Hyatt, Hilton or Hyatt?
Hilton, yes, sir.
Hilton National. We talked to their vice president, who actually was able to speak to us about the risk of private investment going into a brand-new area whereby you are the first hotel in that area. But thanks to the work that Jeff Smith did, sitting behind you from Economic Development, and the work that they did to have RevPAR relooked their study to talk about what this advantage is to bring that hotel industry in here, I think that's what was able to sell us on the fact that it's important to incentivize getting this in here. And with an understanding that they were going to pay full market value and not back off what we believe to be the future value of this investment. So, I understand the analysis of building a hotel in town center and the attraction that that gives you, as opposed to coming into a brand-new area down here and stepping out to increase the explosion that we've already seen.
I respect that we have different views of capitalism. Roger that, sir.
So, looking at the fiscal, the preliminary fiscal impacts of the projects, just reminding that these are, of course, projections, but appreciate management services for the work that they did here. These, you'll notice that these, just to call your attention to the bottom, these fiscal impacts were based on a 65% occupancy rate with a displacement rate of 50%. Paul Harris did these before he retired. As I dug into his impacts, where admittedly, at first, I thought they might be a little rich. As I dug into his assumptions, I became pretty comfortable with them, particularly when we add the revenue off of the restaurant in as well. So, we are projecting in the neighborhood of, well, just over $275,000 per year in revenues from the project. Now, these are all tied to, specifically to Phase One. These revenues are based off of the single hotel and the single restaurant. And so, we wanted to, we thought it was important to limit to Phase One, as that's what we were doing today. But to be conservative on our projections of the returns to the city, we factored in the entire 1.35 million in the event that we were to advance to that level. And so, we, it brings us a return on investment of 4.9 years, which we think is healthy.
One more comment to the council. This is a very conservative occupancy rate in an area that has no hotels and year-round activity and growing exponentially. And this is another ultra-conservative factor of displacement in an area that's underserved, as we sit here today with restaurants and opportunities for guests to have a place to eat on that stretch.
Yeah, as we dug into it, we do believe, to Mr. Williams' point, that there is substantially more net new demand for the city of Virginia Beach here as it pulls people from Chesapeake. And so, the 50% displacement, we agree, would be a very conservative factor to apply to this hotel. Here's the site plan, or the preliminary site plan that Mr. Hanson referenced, just to... Ms. Henley, to your question, you'll see the entrance point here on Community College Place and not on Princess Anne. But this shows you the restaurant here, sort of near the corner, the first hotel, and then over, well, a proposed second hotel and how the conferencing space between them could tie the two facilities together. We think, we're particularly excited about the future conferencing use if we get to that point, but we just do want to mention that that would be a future phase, not in this one. The, just a quick, the brand that is proposed is a Home2 Suites by Hilton. As we mentioned, it's an all-suites brand, and this is just a couple of images of how the, of sort of what their product looks like. As it relates to next steps, with your approval, we would like to bring, we would like to come back to you on the 19th for a public hearing and an ordinance to sell the subject property, Hampton Hospitality, Inc., for the development of the hotel and the restaurant.
Mr. Moss.
Have we changed our policy of having a public hearing in one meeting and a vote at another? Or have we gone back to having a public hearing and a vote on the same night? I thought we had a different thought process.
Generally, do a briefing and then always have a public hearing in front of your ordinance. But we brief you in advance, and then we schedule the ordinance, which includes the public hearing.
I was about to say the same thing. I thought, the whole idea, I thought behind separating the public hearing and the ordinance vote was so that, I mean, everybody here comes to the table knowing how they're going to vote when we have an agenda written. So, having a public hearing the day of a vote is kind of ridiculous. I mean, if that's not where our formal policy is, I mean, I've been under the impression every time we have this situation that we are going to have a public hearing so that the public can tell us their thoughts. And then the next voting meeting, we can make action. But it's disingenuous, in my opinion, to have a public hearing and a vote the same day, because we're all prepared to vote.
I've been aligned to that for, you know, a while now too. And I think this is certainly a discussion for the upcoming retreat. But, you know, and, you know, as we try to engage our public more in a lot of ways, you know, to help us set priorities and everything, I'm certainly opening this up to the council for, you know, just a quick discussion now. You know, I harken back to the, you know, the peer vote, that we had the public hearing and, you know, we didn't really get briefed on it. I think it's going to improve the process if we just have a separate public hearing and to delay the vote for one. I don't think it would inconvenience any developer at all. You know, my thoughts to the council.
You know, I personally would like to hear what the public thinks about the project, especially being a new council member. I want to make sure I get their thoughts and understanding about what's happening.
I agree with that. I think one week delay is not...
Okay.
It would be a two-week delay.
A two-week delay, yeah.
Yeah. Anybody, Aaron?
Public input is always great. What do you think, Rosemary?
I don't have a problem with that at all. Is it going to mess up the apple cart of where we're headed? And is that going to matter?
I'll bring it back in March.
So, the public hearing would be on the 19th, and then we vote in March?
No, well, this is your guidelines, then I will change the way I put the agendas together. And I will assure that I put these briefings on at your workshops so that I can, it's, it just adds another two weeks to an item that I'd be surprised is controversial. But you tell me what you want to do, and I'll set the agenda to make that happen.
And Mr. Hanson, I'll go ahead, Ms. Henley.
Well, I think having the briefing on a workshop is the good idea, because actually, we came up with this policy that we used to meet every Tuesday. But now that we only meet two, we only have voting two weeks in the month, two Tuesdays during the month, that does make it delay. But for those who are extra new, we used to vote every Tuesday. And so, that worked fine. It didn't delay. But since we have this process now of only having voting meetings two weeks out of the year, we should have the briefing just on a workshop.
Yeah, and Mr. Hanson, you know, and I agree, this may not be controversial, but in the future, there was going to be ones that are going to be very controversial, that are going to stir emotion and, you know, public coming out. So, I think by improving the process, you know, it just helps with the transparency of, you know, what we're trying to, you know, bring forward. And, you know, once again, you know, we explain to the public in a deliberative way what our decisions are without, you know, without the appearance of rushing to judgment.
Were you suggesting, Mrs. Henley, that we should vote every week?
Oh, I was just saying, that policy was established back when we voted every week, so it didn't, you know, cause things to be a two-month process. You know, we're able to do it all within a month. But now that we only have voting meetings twice a month, it does drag everything out, so that it could, in fact, be an impediment to a process. But just having the briefing on a workshop day when we don't have a voting meeting.
And you know that on voting days, you will also have to entertain public's comment again, because it is an ordinance item, and you have to entertain it. So, it's actually becomes two opportunities to hear public comment.
And I think that really, but then, once again, you know, the press will cover it, you know, at the public hearing, and then the public will be informed. It'll be recorded, and, you know, just going forward, you know?
I think, though, the overall point is, they, people should have every opportunity to tell us what they think, even if that means we have to move just a tiny bit slower.
Correct, I do concur with that. We work for them.
But we'll bring it back the first Tuesday in March.
That'd be great. Thank you, Mr. Hanson. And if we can make that our policy for now, and we can discuss it further at the retreat. Thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Thank you, Taylor.
We call many days, so we need to talk.
Okay.
Are we going to get all this done in 45 minutes?
Absolutely. Well, we actually only have one agenda item other than our appointments, so we're in fairly good shape. And Mr. Jarman is, he's about a 4,800 RPM, kind of a transportation administrator, well-trained by his, by his city engineer. So, we are launching into CIP, and hopefully you all will enjoy this. It's a great, it's one of the best reference documents you'll get that helps you in your districts. So, with that, let's rock.
Mayor Dyer, members of city council, my name's David Jarman. With me today is Katie Shannon, she's our program project support manager, Philip Cutter, who's our operations engineer, and Phil Pullen, who's our city engineer. We're going to present the FY '20 roadway CIP. This will be the first of three presentations you'll ultimately get from PoliWorks Engineering. This is our overview today, had a lot of topics on there. And we'll dive right into the proposed CIP. We kind of start off with a breakdown here, kind of start high and work our way down into the details. So, starting off with, we want to give you a breakdown of local, state, and federal funding. You can see here, just in a simplistic pie chart, 31% of our funding come from state and federal sources, 69% is city-funded. One of the biggest takeaways from this is, we know here, all projects that were previously fully funded are fully funded in the CIP. That's one big item we want to note. We also have a total program cost of 1.4 billion. And with this, we are able to accelerate three projects by one year. That would be Sandbridge, NMO 7A, Shore Drive Phase Four, and Farrell Parkway. So, that's good news. Breaking this down, I'm sorry, so the...
We're going to move forward a whole year on those three?
Yes, ma'am.
With local money?
Correct. Yes.
Wow.
So, we'll break, and we'll get into the details on that a little bit more as well. We break down the $185 million city funding into five different categories here, just for, again, for reference. So, you can see here, the majority of that is in congestion relief and capacity improvements. You'll note the sliver in there for bridges is a little smaller this year, because we're just getting finished, we funded Lesnar Bridge and Sandbridge Road Bridge. That's a little smaller this year than it has been in the past. Moving forward, we introduced four new projects or programs into the CIP this year. You can see those listed there with some funding details. And we're going to walk through each one of those in a little bit more detail. The first project is General Booth and Oceana Boulevard Inter... The first project is General Booth and Oceana Boulevard intersection. We're making some turn lane improvements there and some lane reconfigurations as well to improve safety and congestion at that location. That is around three smart scale funding project. We did secure $3.6 million in grant funding on that, and total project cost is $4.1 million with a balance to complete of $500,000. So, we'll show that $500,000 when we get to our above target request, kind of where that falls in the, in the matrix there, so. The next project is North Greeneck Road, London Bridge Road, Virginia Beach Boulevard intersection improvements. Again, some turn lane improvements, lengthening turn lanes, taking what was, we call it the pork chop island, which almost looks like a free-flow right, and turning that into a normal right turn lane so people will stop instead of thinking they can go. That's, we see that around the city quite a bit. Again, this one has a million dollars of CMAC funding on there, which federalizes it, for a total project cost of $2.2 million and a balance to complete of $1.2, and we're going to continue to work on securing additional funds for that $1.2 million. Parliament Drive Sidewalk Phase Two, this is a five-foot sidewalk along Parliament from Green Kemp Road to Arrowhead Plaza Shopping Center, about .2 miles, with the standard ADA upgrades, curb and gutter drainage improvements you would expect for a sidewalk project. Again, this has TAP funding, federal funding, $667,000. We're starting design on that with construction scheduled for March of 2020. Total project cost, just less than a million dollars. Next project is Princess Anne TCC Intersection Improvements. These are improvements, intersection improvements scheduled there at TCC. I think there was some conversation about that. Looking to do a three-way intersection, obviously turn lane upgrades, right-left turn lanes in there. Looking to start design on that in July of 2020, and construction following two years later. Total project cost of $1.5 million. Next slide here, we just wanted to show a list of, it's 27 major projects in the CIP. The projects in red are projects that are in there but have a balance to complete, so we just want to kind of call that out for you so you can see some of the big projects there. The next slide shows upcoming new construction, and this is a good slide because it gives you an indicator of what we're going to be doing in the next two years, which is building a lot of stuff, which is great. It's good news. There's eight-
PS-7's not on there.
PS-7 because it's already in construction. It's been awarded, so, yes. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Money in Princess Anne, Barbara.
So, again, it's about 18 projects in the next 20 months, and you can see it's about $196 million worth of improvements that we've got scheduled here. One item to note is, we also call out the projects with state and federal funding. So, you can see with the asterisk, there's a lot of those that are kind of intermingled in our program, so, which is a good thing.
Just for a question, as we have these new projects, I assume that we're running all these through our drainage model and even anticipating future projects, and we're creating the piping capacity and everything else, even if it's more than what the road requires?
Absolutely. That's a huge part of what we're doing. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we also have some major programs in the CIP. You can see those listed there, seven programs with kind of the average annual funding for each, and we're going to just kind of step into some of the bigger ones right now, just to give you a feel for what those include. The Major Bridge Rehabilitation is our first one. This is, as the title sounds, it's for rehabilitation inspection of bridges and overpasses, a very important CIP that we need there. And currently, we've got two bridges that are listed as structurally deficient, 14 that are functionally obsolete. So, I want to give you that list there so you can see that, not to scare anybody, but the structurally deficient ones are the ones that we want to focus on. Those are very important. Those are ones that perhaps have spalling concrete or rebar that is rusted, things like that. The good news is, both of those projects, Laskin Road Bridge, that's going to be completed with the VDOT project, and Speed Fintris, we have a rehab plan for that that's already in motion. So, that's good. The functionally obsolete list is basically just a way to say the structure doesn't meet current standards. It's like if you built a house 30 years ago and you went to do wiring, and in addition, you'd have to have it in current standards. That's all that means, so.
But do you have a rating when you, I'm sure you go out and look at these every so often and do an engineering structural inspection, right?
Correct.
With its current grade. So, do you have a matrix that shows, you know, when the last time it was on a degradation period, and when it goes from functionally obsolete to its forecasted structurally deficient?
Absolutely.
Is there such a matrix? Can I get a copy of that, please?
Sure. Absolutely. We can do that. Yeah, it's, it's on the state's website, too, I might add. The state has records of that. We have to send that to them and track. We can get that to you.
On that structurally deficient, the Speeds Bridge, that's not that metal plate that's in the middle, that's not going to be there forever, is it? It's a terrible block.
No, ma'am, that'll be replaced.
That's a part of what you're replacing there.
That'll be, that'll be corrected with the, with the, yeah.
And I noticed that the Royal Ferry Bridge is not listed there, but it is listed on your upcoming new construction, so that is being done this year.
Yes, ma'am, and we have a slide, we have a slide for that as well. Yes, ma'am. All right. So, that's good news. It's good news that our list is relatively small compared to other places. Street Reconstruction, this is a program that we use. This is not the resurfacing CIP, that's a different funding source. This is where we have to go in and do much more in-depth repairs to the roadway or intersection. You can see some recent projects that were completed, and you see the upcoming projects there at Indian River Military Highway, some repairs, and Pleasant Ridge Road as well. This program receives an annual funding of about $2.15 million per year, so it's an important program as well.
I'm sorry to keep that interrupting, but-
Sure, I'm sorry. Let me go back.
Projects, that Pleasant Ridge Road, I hope that's the eastern end because that road's going to fall in.
I'm looking to our operations.
We're coordinating with the ditch work, but it's pretty much the entire run of Pleasant Ridge Road.
Well, up by Princess, Princess Anne is no problem, but you get down there by Beggar's Bridge, and that road's going to collapse. I've been telling you all that for years, but with all of the flooding in that area, that, that road is terribly deteriorated, so I hope that's what you're planning on doing.
We're going to work with some of the ditch work that we're already planning in that area, and coordinate with them, and we're going to come in behind.
But that's going to be up on the other end.
Right.
This, this end is where the road is falling apart.
Sure. Okay. All right, thanks, Philip. The next program is TSI Traffic Safety Improvements Phase Four. This is our smaller project-type program where we do turn lanes, sidewalks, guardrails, things like that, that don't warrant necessarily standalone CIP. And you can see in here, we've got 63 active subprojects and programs. This is also, if you note the bullet here, this has a lot of our grant funding for smaller projects as well. When we get these federal grants, this is where we have the city match fund in here. So, this is an important CIP for us.
Are bike lanes on there?
Bike lanes typically would be included with the project. If we were doing a project that had federal funding for bike lanes, it would probably be funded out of the CIP here, so it could be, yes. And the average annual funding on that's $1.9 million. Yes, sir.
Is the sidewalk in the area of Rudy, is that in this as well, or, because I know there's a-
I don't believe this one's in here, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a-
That's a standalone project.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's fine, I'll go back.
Question on the sidewalks, is that, are there sidewalks, the ones that are participating with, like, the neighborhoods who are trying to get sidewalks, or is it totally separate?
It can be. It depends. If we get federal funding, we, we keep a list of sidewalk requests, and of course, there's a pretty significant backlog, and so, the federal funding, when we have matching funds, sometimes that takes priority because there's a time restriction on that. And so, we keep them on the backlog, and as we flush these out, we'll get another batch and try to work those as best we can.
Can you, can you get us the rest of all the sidewalk requests that we have?
Sure. We'll get that. Yes, ma'am.
When people, like, I know it happened in a neighborhood adjacent to where I live, people move in and have a handicap, and the sidewalks have not been made handicap accessible, and then the city, knowing that someone now has that capable, has that demands, they come in and they put those little aggregate, you know, ramps to get up on the sidewalk. Is that funded out of here, or is that a different place, or how are those things funded?
We would typically handle those out of our main, our operations maintenance budget.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. The next project is an example of a small project in the TSI program, the Pacific Avenue Pedestrian Improvements. The corridor improvements extend from Fifth Street to 40th Street, but we're, we're looking at block improvements in here. This was a rendering you see from 33rd to 34th, but basically providing a pedestrian refuge where there's not one today, crosswalks, street lighting, et cetera. In this particular case, we were awarded $585,000 in B SIP, a federal grant funding, and start design on that early. We started that last month and start construction in fall this year, so there's an ordinance on council agenda today for that particular item right there, that $485,000.
The Bikes and Carriers Committee did review that, so.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Traffic Signal Rehabilitation, this is the next program that we have. Again, this is just doing signal upgrades for deteriorator antiquated equipment, $150,000 allocated annually for that. And then finally, just a slide, just to noting kind of some other areas where roadway supports economic development. You can see here the Biopark, Princess Anne Biopark, and then the Vet Care Center are listed in the pictures. There's some other projects in there that we help support.
And I need to interrupt one more time.
Sure.
The folks on, in the Landstown Meadows community have become concerned about that intersection at Winterberry that's going to be the entrance to the biomedical park because they're concerned that Winterberry may become a blue street.
Right.
And I think, I think it was somebody that covered it, so we really do need to get that with the community and make sure they're comfortable and we're doing whatever we can to keep happening.
Sure. I think our trafficking and staff are looking at that as well. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Quickly run through some accomplishments. The Holland Road Project Phase Six is finally, finally, finally completed. This was VDOT administered, $62 million, completed in December. Indian River Princess Anne, the interim improvements there at the Punggol intersection, $310,000, that was completed in May.
Yes, $310,000, we understand.
Okay, there's the queue. Got it. Kendall Streets, Kendall Street Sidewalk, this is TSI Project Pedestrian, oops, sorry, let me slide forward there. Pedestrian improvements there, total project cost $473,000, completed in June of last year. Oops, let me back up, I don't want to miss our signature there. Lesnar Bridge, there's your postcard picture that we were kind of hoping for on that. Total project cost on that, $115 million, completed in December. Our next project is a paving project here, State of Good Repair Primary Extension Funds. We got $1.1, or $1 million in State of Good Repair funding for a total cost of $1.14, which allowed us to do 13.5 lane miles on Virginia Beach Boulevard. That was completed in December as well. Oops, I'm sorry. I forget, there's two projects on here. Virginia Beach Boulevard, Kellam Road, pedestrian improvements, total cost there $160, and completed, expected here this month. So, we've also got a list of projects that are currently under construction, just to keep you updated on those. You can see the ones that are asterisks are ones that are kind of in procurement, some form of procurement, either bidding or awarded, or being awarded.
When is, when is the flyover supposed to be done?
I'll get to that in just a second. Yep. Give me, give me a slide here. The bus stop infrastructure project, this is for taking the bus stops and adding bus shelters to them, so there's weather protection there. We've got 14 completed, 10 are currently under design or in construction. Our goal is 100 bus shelters, and we've also managed to secure some federal funding on that as we're coordinating with HRT. You can see the total project cost of $2.7 million. Greenwich Road Cross.
Is there a way that I can find out, I guess, a list of completed, completed ones that you already have?
Sure.
And then with the next ones, we'll go-
Sure, we can get that for you. Yes. Is there another question? Okay. All right. Greenwich Road Cross over Cleveland Street, this is, again, a component of the 64264 project to relocate Cleveland Street and Clearfield Avenue. We started construction on that in June of 2018. This is the city's project now. It's about 50% complete, and we're looking to finish up here in spring. Total cost for that piece is $2.6 million. With regards to the I-264 project, there's, there's three different phases on that, and so there's going to be completion, it's going to kind of trickle here. The Phase Three is summer of 2019, Phase One is October of 2019, and it's all going to be done by fall of 2021 on Phase Two. So, it's kind of staggered, I guess.
I know I bring this up every time this comes up, but anyone who's been over that way, who thinks that Clearview, Clearfield Avenue going up to the Boulevard where Haynes is, that's now a two-lane road that already backs up today, isn't going to be phenomenally, people aren't going to be thinking going to Witch Duck. They're going to say, how can I get right to the Boulevard?
Right.
And I'm just telling you, I know we don't have it here, but we might just be added to an unfunded list, but that is going to prove to be an untenable situation in a very short, when that thing opens up and people say, ooh, not going to go, I'm going to go to the Boulevard. I'm just telling you, that's reality. That's water funding that we passed every resistance.
Stay tuned, we have, we have something for you.
Oh, very good. Excellent.
I love it when I'm playing.
Phew. Okay. Indian River Kimsville Road, this is the Continuous Flow Intersection, Kimsville and Indian River with indirect lefts, median U-turns. We started construction in June of last year, we're about 15% complete, looking to finish in March of 2020, total cost of $23 million. And finally, Witch Duck Road Phase Two, this is the sixth lane from I-264 to Virginia Beach Boulevard, about a half a mile. We started construction in January of 2017. We're a little over halfway done, completion scheduled May of 2020, total project cost of $60.1 million. All right, so the next section we want to talk about is COF funding, and we wanted to put this in here because we know it's, it's an important part of our program, and just to kind of reiterate the, the challenges and some of the successes that we've had with that. So, I want to start off with Alphabet Soup. These are the acronyms that we deal with, with federal funding. So, it gives you a list of kind of the major funding sources that we go after for grant funding, and you'll see some of the terminology in there that we use with the CMAC, H SIP, B SIP, revenue sharing. These are all kind of standard funding sources that we use on a lot of transportation projects. So, with-
Before we move off that, I noticed reading through the bond prospectus, Mr. Hanson, on the sewer thing, they mentioned that we get a 35% rebate from the feds on the interest for the Witch Duck Road project, was that Build America thing during the Obama Road project, but that we don't pledge or otherwise predicate those revenues as part of our, to the bond people that we make the borrowing from. Do we actually put that, does that cash, that rebate, when we get that cash back, does that go into the debt service account, or, or does that, that money go back to transportation to build roads? I'll check.
I think I can answer that. We recognize it as a revenue when it comes back in, add them into the general rate of that.
Okay. Right, very good. Thank you. I can find that somewhere later. Thank you.
All right. So, our next slide is a listing, give you a table there of the COF funding that we've been successful with just in the last fiscal year. So, this is from July of 2018 to now. You can see a list of 17 projects there. We list the total project cost and the funding that's been awarded, and the local funds that were committed to that as well. So, you can see down there at the bottom, $24.2 million is what we've achieved in the last 12 months. That's, that's a pretty good number. And again, we use the city funds to leverage these funds as well, so that, that always helps us in our, in our programming for construction funding, roadway funding.
I just asked, yeah, just for clarification, and I think you all do a fantastic job. I don't know how you all mediate all this funds.
Thank you.
You do a great job. This, this Sandbridge Road now, just, just, so I'm hearing it right, this NMO 7A, it this NMO seven A, it looks like it would be able to be under construction in next year's budget?
No, we got it one year, I think, right?
Yeah.
Twenty twenty. This is, this is nineteen. Next year would be?
What is it, July twenty-one?
Twenty-one, yeah. I think that's what it has, July twenty-one. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Shucks. Okay.
Yeah. This is the funding year.
That's when the funding happens.
Yeah.
The funding year.
I should have clarified. That's the funding year, when the funding comes in. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
Well, I was hoping, but you managed to get a hundred, I mean, a million dollars funded from somebody.
Correct, from revenue sharing. Yes.
From revenue sharing.
Yep. And we'll, we'll try to secure additional funding this year for that as well.
But I, I think when you all need to look at this and see that the money for that road is coming local. And that's, that's a hard thing for us because roads like that don't qualify for smart scale. And they should. And, and that one especially, but it doesn't. So it all has to be local money. That's why we can't get that thing built. It's ready to go, I guess.
We're working towards that goal.
Mr. Nygaard.
The Pacific Avenue pedestrian improvement. Isn't that a test project, or is that actually going to go all the way through?
The idea is that it would eventually go all the way through, but we're, we're doing that to, to demonstrate that it will work on that as far as providing the pedestrian safety that we're looking for. Yes, sir.
And the, the area that that's going to include is?
Thirty-third to thirty-fourth street. Yes. Correct. I'm sorry, let me back up. The, the ultimate improvements are, it's the fifth to fortieth street, correct? The one, I'm thinking of what you, what you're going to approve here.
Fifth to fortieth.
Fifth to fortieth. That's the corridor.
That's the corridor, okay.
The piece that I mentioned with the grant.
If we're going to do this all the way?
Yes. Yes. Sorry.
Do we have an estimate on that?
For the corridor improvements, I'll have to look and get that to you.
It's about a million dollars for it, and we secured about half a million in grant funding. So we're using TSI.
No, the whole corridor.
The whole corridor. I think it was a little bit more. We'll-
I don't know, it's a little more than that.
Yes.
We're not doing the Pacific, the pedestrian crossings everywhere. We're only able to do those where you have an existing median right now and the on-street parking. So the other improvements we're doing are lighting, flashing arrows, signage, stuff like that.
Okay. But I'll get the, you know what I'm asking for, the whole?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll look, we'll look at that.
Thanks. I'm going to hold you up.
No, you're fine, you're fine. So the next slide is looking ahead at applications that we currently have pending right now. So we have three applications that are pending, totaling twenty-one point seven million dollars right now. And with a local commitment of fourteen point two million, if we're successful in, in receiving those. And then also, we've got some opportunities coming up here this year, summer, August and November. So you can kind of see our, our grant schedule playing out here for the, the coming months. So then finally, we put a slide in here, sorry.
Before we move on?
Yes.
Not now, but when you come back, then we're looking to get a discussion. It would be nice to know the methodology, because in some cases, there was, there was federal funds, but we weren't matching. It was above target, was the word you used. In other cases, where we are getting matching funds, we're making a priority for local funds. So I'm trying to, just so we can explain to the public. And it would also be interesting to know, as we make these improvements, how the service level changed. Now, that's not the purpose here, but I think ultimately, the public says, great to spend money. But the output is, oh, this went from F to D, or state F, or went to C, or whatever the new federal thing is, would be great to know, so people know the output that they're getting.
Okay, we can look at that for you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So the last slide in this section, we wanted to kind of recap some of the smart scale allocations, because that seems to be front and center a lot of times. So we, we went back and said, round one, you can see round one, round two and round three. Round one was thirty-six million dollar award, round two was thirty million, and round three, which we just found out here a couple of weeks ago, was three point six million. So a lot different in round three than what we had originally anticipated. Some of the criteria and what was selected, the type of project, was much different than what we had originally expected. So that's kind of the outcome of that.
I think the biggest issue the council needs to know is that the state gave a region two hundred million dollars towards the Hampton Roads Bridge Tunnel.
Yeah.
And all told, there was only seven hundred and forty million in the pot.
Total.
Total. And two hundred of it, over five hundred of it went to major projects, four or five. And you can see that we may have been penalized, but we also put in some big ticket items and they weren't given out, big ticket item grants. So I'd share that with you.
I did mention that, yes.
But looking at this, this amount, all right, this is money from the state, okay? We used to get this much every year from the state back in the nineties and the early two thousands. And then they just stopped funding us. So I think people need to realize that, you know, the state has really backed off in participating with our road funding. And like I say, we used to get thirty-five million dollars every year.
Correct.
Just at sort of at our discretion. And now we have to compete for it.
Right.
And, and what's so troubling, like I said a little while ago on the Sandbridge Road thing, is it, it, the, the smart scale criteria starts with congestion, and resiliency is not one of them. And that's one of the reasons we're going to have an increased cost in our road projects, because we're going to have to be building in this resiliency factor. I mean, that's what happened with the Sandbridge Road thing.
Sure.
We're really at a disadvantage with the state.
If you look at the state's increase in Medicare and Medicaid spending, you can see why there's less money for other stuff.
Well, I don't know. I think, I think roads is some major, probably what they should be funding.
Okay. We'll move on to the above-target projects. We've got a list here of seventeen projects, and you'll note, the, the first eight are currently in the CIP. They have a, a budget, a balance to complete. And the remaining projects, and they're listed in alphabetical order, I want to clarify that, they're not in priority order. The remaining projects are not in the CIP, and they again are listed in alphabetical order, projects nine through seventeen. I'm sorry.
My question, another comment. I am really glad to see that you all have Punggol Ferry Road there as a, as a project that you're really looking at. And this is one, folks, that I'm certainly going to be talking about a lot. And this is elevating the western side of Punggol Ferry Road. The past two years, for the first time in my lifetime, and that's a good while, that we've had our three access roads into the center part of the city closed because of flooding. I mean, no exit until you get north of the Punggol intersection. All of them were closed because of flooding. And we're definitely going to have to do something to, to correct that, because all of that area is considered a Zone A. So all the evacuation routes were flooded. And clearly, I think you all did the right choice in picking which one to go first, and that's Punggol Ferry.
Okay. We have, we have a slide for that, too. We can talk to that.
Yeah. I mean, but we really are going to have to do something to address that as soon as possible.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to pick up on this Henley's point. And that gets back to this methodology thing, and I know we're going to retreat about flooding, but we may want to be looking at that, what's the methodology of how we look at things, and maybe things that otherwise wouldn't be at the top, because we deal with these fundamental things of being able to evacuate, not be trapped, might change how we look at those projects. And we might be, you know, to the extent that it doesn't cause churn, because you don't want to lose engineering work, I understand all that stuff, believe me. But where we have that trade space, we may need to be thinking about, that's a public safety issue more than a transportation issue, Barbara, I think. And I think we want to look at that.
So as David flips the charts on the projects, you'll see a local, state and a federal funding line. And if you, if you punch it out, we're giving it back, because the rollover is really hard or virtually impossible to secure.
Well, that's like I said, we've got to really know where the real trade space is.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right. So the first project we got for the above-target request here is Elbow Road Extended Phase Two D. This is the last of the three phases of Elbow Road. The other two are in, we can talk about those, those are already fully funded. This is from Salem Road to the Amphitheater, about one point five miles. We were successful in securing RSTP funds for FY twenty-three to twenty-five. We're going to be looking potentially for RSTP funds in later years. So that's kind of a funding strategy. You'll see in some of these slides where we think we have a funding strategy, we'll put that as a bullet point, just to kind of let you know. But you can see the total project cost is twenty-seven point three million, and the balance to complete is twelve point seven. And we've kind of shown how we would anticipate funding that project. Next project is Indian River Road Princess Anne Intersection Improvements. This is the Punggol intersection. Again, we completed interim improvements. This will be the ultimate, ultimate improvement in the intersection with turn lanes, or potentially a roundabout. We've talked about a couple of different options there. Still to be determined. Total project cost on that is six point nine million, with a balance to complete of six point six. Laskin Road Phase One B, this is the six-lane section from Red Robin to Oil Drive, about point six miles. Again, eliminating the feeder roads. This is the, the last piece that VDOT had on the original project that was kind of broken out, so we could phase it and try to get some of these funded. This is, again, on the east side. And we're, we're looking at potentially doing an infra application for this, another grant opportunity in March of twenty nineteen, here in another month. So the total cost on that is thirty-two point two, with a balance to complete of almost thirty million. Laskin Road Phase Two, this is on the east side of the previous project. This is the six-lane section from Oil Drive to the Laskin Gateway, thirty and thirty-first street, about point three miles. Again, eliminating what's left of the feeder roads. This one's basically in a concept design, it's very early right now. And again, another potential grant opportunity with an infra grant. The total cost is nineteen point nine million, with a balance to complete of eighteen point four.
Do the conceptual design, are bike lanes included in that?
You know, originally, they were not, because it was done so long ago. But when we go back and pick this up again, they would absolutely be included in that.
That's definitely important. I mean, I ride down that street personally myself.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's pretty much the standard thing we're doing on most road projects now. Some bike accommodations, be it a dedicated bike lane, or a wide outside lane, some, some form of that we would put in a project. Yes, sir.
We also added that any new road project's supposed to have a bike lane. That's, we did that by resolution of the council.
Correct.
And also, whenever a road is repaved or whatever, if there's road, we're going to include a bike lane on that one.
In market, right? We do?
Correct.
But this is a legacy VDOT project, right? So?
It, it was at one point, and then we-
It's not going to have bike lanes in it.
We took it over. Well-
Their design.
Originally, it didn't, because it was, it's been around that long. When we go back and pick this up again, we'll go back and look at that and try to find some, some way to do that. Yes. All right. Laskin Phase Three, this is the, the western end from the VDOT project heading west. This is again, six-lane section from Republic Road to Phillips Avenue, about one mile, again, removing the feeder roads, bike accommodations as well on that. Again, looking at other opportunities with smart scale and infra. But the total project cost is thirty-one point five, with most of that being a balance to complete right now. Nemo Parkway Phase Seven B, this is the two-lane section from Albuquerque to Sandbridge, or Nemo Seven A, about one point five miles. This is the, the section that would include the new bridge over Asheville Creek. We completed the preliminary engineering report, the PER, and had a public meeting last fall. We also, in the meantime, were successful in getting five hundred thousand dollars in RSTP funds, which effectively federalizes the project. So that's good news. It opens up other opportunities for us. We would also pursue potential RSTP funding in, in outer years as well. But you can see the total cost on that is still pretty hefty at forty-one point nine, with a balance to complete of twenty-eight point one. All right. North Gray Neck Road, London Bridge Road, intersection improvements. This is the sections that we talked about, making the improvements there on London Bridge. We talked about this a little bit already. The total cost on this is two point two, and you can see we're showing the balance to complete in FY twenty-four. Okay. Princess Anne Road Phase Seven A, these are safety improvements from Sandbridge Upton Intersection down south to Seaboard Road. It will be shoulder widening, drainage improvements and utility relocations. Total cost on that is eight point seven million dollars, with a BTC of eight point four. Clearfield Avenue, this was our first new project that's introduced. Again, this would be, this would be the four-lane divided that we talked about.
I just got problems there.
With bike accommodations and shared use pass. Again, improving capacity and mobility demands. Total project cost of nine point eight million dollars on that. Our General Booth Oceania Boulevard intersection, we talked about that previously. So you can just see here, the, the funding that we're looking for would be in FY twenty-four, the five hundred thousand dollars, that would be the above-target request. And we, we would want to show this, because VDOT requires this project to be shown as fully funded. So we would want to make sure that we show that as program. Landstown Road Improvements Phase Two, this would be the second of three Landstown Road projects. This would get us from the ninety-degree bend in Landstown Road, south of the Sports Park, another point eight miles into the ITA area. So this would be kind of our first effort north-south roadway into the ITA section. Again, on-road bike facilities and shared use pass. This would also serve as a link to the, the future proposed Waste Management Services facility. Total cost on that is eighteen point nine million dollars. New Bridge Sandbridge Road Intersection Improvement, this would be a project to raise the intersection and provide turn lanes. We looked at trying to do this in conjunction with the Asheville Park Drainage Improvements, but the need for that was too immediate. And because we have, we would have to secure property from fish and wildlife, which is an eighteen to twenty-four month painful process. And so we decided we just need to set up a, a new standalone project to accommodate that. Total project cost is seven point two million dollars. Nemo Parkway Phase Two, this is the east-west connector from Nemo Parkway at West Neck, heading west to the ITA area. Again, one point three miles, four-lane divided roadway. This could be a potential RSTP candidate, perhaps. We're looking at the total cost on that as being thirty-four point two million dollars. Punggol Ferry Road Improvements, again, this is proposed right now to raise Punggol Ferry Road from Blackwater to the west side of Punggol Ferry Road. It's about two miles. And the idea here, as Ms. Henley kind of mentioned earlier, would be to reduce the recurring flooding frequency, where we have to put the signs up to say road closed, because it is an important east-west connector for the southern part of the city to, to get out of the area. Total project cost on that is eleven point five million dollars.
The other two accesses, of course, are West Neck Road and Indian River Road, both of which were closed by flooding.
Correct.
To all three at one time, but this one would be the logical one.
Correct. Correct. The next, after kind of looking at this in a little bit more, we, we decided to create a, get back my slide, resiliency and flooding CIP for program within roadways. Because what's happening is, when we look to do roadway improvements, we have a rural road program. And it's not really appropriate to say, we're going to go in and start raising roads up in that program. It's designed for safety improvements, turn lane improvements. And so what we kind of need is a program where we can look at the projects, we can study those, we can figure out what improvements would be warranted, and then we could also fund those improvements. So what we tried to do is create a program where we allocate a million dollars a year for a total project cost of six million dollars that would allow us to start looking ahead on some of those things.
Fine, except for your funding source.
It's a potential funding source.
Six votes.
Putting it on record.
Potential. Duly noted.
So are we.
All right. Sandbridge Nemo Seven A, again, this is a sea level rise resiliency improvement. So we'll have this, the Sandbridge Nemo Seven A project. This is potentially an improvement where we could build a levee or a bulkhead-type system coming through here. Right now, the roadway project includes raising the road up three feet to accommodate sea level rise, but it's just sand. It's not any kind of structural, any kind of deterrent for, for flooding. What this would do is, is allow us to go in and construct an engineered levee system, which has like a clay core and different fill components. It's much more expensive to build. So the idea is that council is still working on decisions about what to do with sea level rise. We're trying to move forward with the road project. What we want to do is make this kind of an option that could be standalone. So if council says, yes, we want to do this, we could pull this project up, fund it, and we could say, go ahead and build a bulkhead, or, or add a levee, however we want to, you know, do that. So that's the reason that's in here. Okay? All right. Finally, the traffic calming, this is a new program. Historically, this has been in a TSI program. And historically, we haven't gotten to the point where there's a four-step process here. It's education, enforcement, enforcement with fines, and physical devices. Historically, we haven't gotten to physical devices. Well, we're getting to physical devices. So what we're finding is there's a need to fund this and to pay for this in the neighborhoods. And as more people are kind of coming around to this and they want it, there's much more costs associated with it than what we can handle in the TSI program. So that's why you're seeing it as a standalone program.
Jessica.
What does, what does a speed table cost?
The speed table cost, it depends. This is a temporary one, and I believe the temporary cost, I don't know if you know, it's like sixty grand on it?
Permanent one, which we're getting ready to put the first permanent one in, we read the site in Fairfield, is about fifteen thousand dollars. All asphalt, either a table or a hump. These here, I think, are about the same, just because their material costs and the-
But they're movable.
Right. And this is temporary, just so people can understand, there's a noise associated with this. And so if the residents say, oh, no, we made a mistake, we can take those out and, and go back to the way it was. So-
The, the temporary ones are quite loud. I mean, I, I know that all the district reps probably deal with this pretty frequently. But just on this point, I really think that, well, I've asked for this to be a point of discussion at the retreat with our interview. But I think we also need to create some kind of committee where we're getting the feedback from the public, because you guys can personally attest, last night, we had a meeting at Fairfield Civic League. And to say that emotions were passionate would be the understatement of the year. I mean, I, I left ten minutes before you guys ended.
You were.
And it was, it wa, you could cut the tension in the room. I mean, it, it was, I, I really think we've got to start trying to get more creative, give staff more support. I think the speed tables overall, I think, are well-received, but they're, the public as a whole, at least in Kempsville, doesn't feel like it, it's enough. So, and it's not really your guys'
Sure.
situation. But I think moving forward at the retreat, we really need to start looking at what other options are available, and what people around the world are doing for traffic calming.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jessica. You know, as a home care rehab guy that gets all over, you know, seven-five-seven, I find remarkably effective. I see more, you know, s, s, speed signs posted, but it, with, you know, I guess the solar panels on them, and it shows what the speed is. You see this, you know, on Little Cree, not, not Little Creek, but, you know, down in Norfolk and everything. And I think they're remarkably effective. And, you know, now that you, the council graciously got Lindhaven Eleven open, you know, it's rough maintaining speed limits on that.
Sure.
So I'm just wondering if you would consider, you know, those, show what the speeds are. And I think, you know, it's an alert to the people that they may not be aware, because they're going with the flow.
Absolutely. And that, that is part of the enforce, of the education component.
Yeah.
That's part of the education component within here as well. We do have those same trailers to let people know what the speed. We, we only have a limited number, so we can't put them everywhere, but-
But these are permanent.
Oh, you're talking permanent signs. Okay, I'm sorry.
They're permanent on stanchions.
Right.
So, so Mayor and Ms. Abbott and everybody, I brought speed tables back from Denmark. I have, they know what Chapter Two is. Chapter Two are bumpouts with single lanes. And, I mean, we, they work, and they work in Europe, and they'll work here. We're just not used to it. But this is, this has been a success story. The data is supporting-
I agree.
The hottest neighborhood in Rome.
I know.
And we've been in that. And the data is showing these works. So we now transition from temporary to permanent, and we go move these to another location and see what the data tells us. And when the data tells us it's actually working, we continue to formulate that. But we will schedule workshops to bring in those ideas, and we'll continue to educate you all, so that as you're out, this is a brand-new CIP. We recognize you all are dealing with this. So we're going to carve out some dollars that allows us to come into your neighborhoods and help create infrastructure changes.
If I could just add one last thing. I, one, I really, I was really happy to see this, because I do think that in order to move forward, move into this decade with traffic calming, there's going to be capital expense with that. But I also really think we've got to go into the neighborhoods and, and really change the culture of what a neighborhood road looks like, because it should be a moving, living, breathing thing. There should be people out in their neighborhoods. And I, I really believe that some of the way neighborhoods have been designed in the past really deterred people from being out in their streets, and have changed what a street is. And I think we now have these weird hybrid strods, if you will, where you're not sure if you're on a neighborhood street, or if you're on a road. And, and, and that's just, moving into the retreat, that's just a big concern of mine. But I do, I think this is great. I'm excited about it.
No, it's, it's a great step forward.
Yes, it is.
Awesome. Excellent. Okay. And finally, we have requested but not funded projects. We have a laundry list of those projects in your presentation. What we want to do is just summarize that for you right now and just kind of categorize it. Again, 63 projects totaling almost $2 billion with the breakdown there. And again, those slides are in your handout. At this point, Ms. Henley, I'm sorry.
I think the last three, 601, 602, 603, those Westneck Parkway extended, I think we did away with that with the ITA.
We did.
So those three projects don't exist.
Correct.
I mean, you can't go all.
Correct.
That's Lansdowne Extended and Nimmo.
We were just doing some additional updates, and you're absolutely right on those. Yes, ma'am?
So you don't have to spend that money.
Okay.
How do we determine which roads should be built, which roads should be, you know, picked?
Right.
Do we do any kind of an economic impact study? Do we do any kind of an impact on resiliency?
We do have, with our traffic engineering, they do an annual update on analysis of roadway intersections and segments for safety, where there's accidents. It doesn't necessarily carry an economic development component to it, but it's pure safety and capacity, things like that. So we do prioritize them using data in that regards. Yes, sir.
And congestion. We take a look at congestion, traffic accidents, and we try to categorize where the most congested are. It's a long-term process. It takes the fastest you could ever see a project, maybe seven years.
Wow.
And, you know, Alaskan Road is 22-years-old right now.
I was here in '86 when we were talking about it.
I remember. But my question is, we, you know, we talked about the hotel and the impact of that, so we're going to spend $1.3 million with a return. So there's obviously some impact that economic development has. And wouldn't it be a good way to say, "If we spend a dollar on the road, we get X dollar in return?"
Sure.
It's back to showing results. I know we paid to have this model done of our arterial highway systems. That's a mathematical model. It would be good to say, "This is our status quo, how it looks, and what's red, green, or yellow." I don't know how you can update and use your algorithms to show that. When we build out the stuff that's funded, then you got another look. So what was red might be now yellow. We probably don't have too many greens. But nonetheless, but it would be good to be able to show people in a visual sense, because people nowadays are, you can just have to watch TV, are very much visual learners, but to be able to show that.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Well, I have a grand idea, but especially you spend, say, $6 million on an intersection, what would that do for us?
Reach out to Waze, they can do a before-and-after for us.
Check.
Any other questions?
Thank you. All right.
Turning it back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? That was a great enlightening report, shows that we're moving forward. Obviously, roads and infrastructure are very important to quality of life, to military, and economic development, so it's very expensive. Okay. All right, are we ready to move on? Council liaison reports. John.
We had a very interesting Green Ribbon Committee meeting on January 24th. We had a presentation by folks from the Army Corps of Engineers who are doing a Lynn Haven River ecosystem project, which happens to be the only new start project that was awarded in the nation. And they funded all three phases. And this is going to be a three-phase project, one creating a wetland restoration behind Princess Anne High School, and one that does, deals with SAV creation over more in the eastern part of the Lynn Haven River area near First Landing. It's really a neat project, and I just think y'all would be very interested in knowing that this is being done, and it's a Corps of Engineers project, and it's pretty neat. We don't get too many from them.
That's a really good new start.
Yeah. And to have it funded, federally funded, the only new start in the country, and all three phases funded, so some good news there.
Louis, Dave, and I had a meeting yesterday with Historic Preservation Chairman, President of the Friends of Historic Houses, Friends Group, and the President of the Virginia Beach Houses Foundation. And Louis and I had proposed a compromise for the Princess Anne House. And I'm really, we're both pleased to tell you that the foundation has accepted our compromise. And Dave is going to write a letter, deputy in writing. And it's going to probably require a little bit more money to get the house ready for the World War II exhibit. The second floor is like just offices, and that's going to need to be made into exhibit space. And the basement's going to need some new lighting and some other things done to it. Compared to what could have been, they want a $2.5 million visitor center. This will be a big savings for us, and it's going to make a lot of people happy, to get everybody to come together. So I was really pleased with the compromise. Louis, did you want to say something?
Well, I guess it comes down to the fact that they needed to understand that we probably weren't going to build a $2.5 million exhibit hall, and that we could do what we needed to do, what, $150,000 about, Dave?
In addition to the $900,000, we got programs.
$900.
So we know what we're talking about.
Keep them honest.
But anyway, it seems to be working out.
So that's a good savings compared to what it could have been. And the $900,000 is just to really save the house. It's to waterproof it, so it's a problem with some intrusion going into the bricks and HVAC and all. It's like putting tires on your car. It's nothing fun and fancy, but it's got to be done to save the house.
Historical Society.
And I think that's a.
They wanted to get $50,000 for up there, Louis and everybody.
Yeah.
They have to do that ourselves.
That's a great.
$900,000, I can't imagine what they're going to do.
That's a great use of effective communication to get things done.
Well, and I think all the groups that came together also understood that they really needed to work closely together, closer together. And so that was a really good outcome.
Great job by all. John?
Well, first of all, I want to thank Rosemary for her leadership on that, because we had chatted. She did a great job. Thank you, Rosemary. But I want to talk about Virginia Beach Development, Community Development Corporation. I went to the last meeting. You know, Lynn is getting ready to conduct an audit. I'm going to wait and see how that comes back. But fundamentally, the trend line of their revenues relative to their cost, relative to the clientele that they're serving on our scattered strategy that the board is now implementing that we want, cannot be closed without some external, I think, help to get that cost curve, because the revenue curve isn't going to do much. And about three years out, which I mentioned once before, there's this balloon payment that they have. So after the audit, Shannon in the chair and myself are going to meet with Dave to talk about this. I wanted to retreat to get behind another workload on the staff. But I don't want to wait till the end of, what, three years from now, when all this comes together and there's no plan. But their current revenue trend line and the cost of supporting the scattered housing that they have today, that is, there's a gap there that's not going to close. It's just going to continue. It's either one, we need to rethink and go back and have that discussion we had once before, or we're going to be in some situation, which I know we don't want to be in, of subsidizing the strategy that we have versus the clientele that they're serving, or we direct they change the clientele that they serve, and then those people are, don't have housing. This is, I'd like to tell you that there's an easy solution, but there is not. The board is on board with dealing with it, but I'm just giving you a heads-up. Right now, I can't see the path to closure. Maybe when we get some smarter people looking, maybe some people from industry can help us on that maintenance cost and look how to change that cost curve. But it's, I don't want to wait to three years from now. Now it's a crisis, but I'm just giving you a heads-up. We are working an issue, and they're implementing our strategy, but the revenue doesn't support it.
Another great example of effective communication.
But the board's very good, so is the staff.
Really glad that you and Shannon are in there.
So I just wanted to give everybody an update. Bobby and I had our meeting with the food trucks and the Restaurant Association, I guess, the Tuesday after our last meeting, or the Wednesday. I don't, it was the week of the last, our last council meeting. The meeting itself went very, very well. I think everybody left the room feeling good about where we were on the food truck ordinance that said they had a board meeting, Restaurant Association had a board meeting and invited some of the food truck owners. And my understanding is that meeting didn't go as well. I'm still working through stuff with Amy Taylor of the Restaurant Association, Virginia Beach Restaurant Association has not put out a formal opinion on anything. I'm very optimistic that by next week, I'll have a real good idea of where we're at and that hopefully it can still proceed to planning and then eventually come to us. We're working on and trying to get everything close to being done before the end of February, just because the trucks have to pay a $300 fee per truck, and that's due at the end of the month. And the goal was to try to get them taken care of at the new rate of $45 before their licenses came up again, because that's a pretty significant cost for them to bear. But so far, I think we're in an okay position, but I'll have more for you guys on next Tuesday.
That's great. Good stuff. Any other liaison?
Well, I'm getting my feet wet learning all the alphabets at the beach, part of the RAC Commission, and I've got about six subcommittees. I've been going to each one of those. And the plan is to redraw the RACE app, which is the strategic plan for the resort area, which you'll be hearing more from later.
Great. Any other liaisons? Council comments. Mr. Wood.
Yes, well, on Wednesday, the 23rd, Thursday, the 24th, the mayor and I went to Richmond and met with the delegation and did our annual dinner with our delegation and talked about a number of things. One of the things, obviously, one of the main topics from our perspective was, because we just received the Dewberry, because this is two weeks, I guess, now, we just received the Dewberry study, and so we talked a good bit about the infrastructure, eventual infrastructure requirements that the city will have down the road and just kind of given, laying the foundation for that, because obviously, it's going to be local, state, and federal funding at some point if we choose to do all of that. Well, I know it's obviously way out of it, but.
Hopefully.
And again, things move quicker in Richmond on different things. So the topic at that point that they were discussing mostly amongst themselves were the various casino deals, which have now, you know, been shuttled off for another year or so. And it was before some of the other political things have been popped up there. But it was generally a good meeting, I thought.
It was very good. And I was introduced to the gentleman that helped facilitate Amazon, you know, coming to Virginia. And he did indicate that there might be an interest in doing some work right here in Virginia Beach with, you know, some things. So it was a good bridge-building thing, and we discussed also having, you know, our council meet more formally and informally, you know, with the delegation throughout the year to build those positive bridges. And, you know, in this way, they're more aware of, you know, where we're coming from. And then also with the school board, that would be, you know, just a way, just to improve communications. We're hearing some good stuff today.
That broadband ring should probably help with the Amazon.
Yes, yes. Ms. Henley.
I hope you all will put February 20th on your calendar, 7:00 PM, at the Advanced Technology Center. Dr. Daniel McLaughlin of Virginia Tech will be giving a presentation about the work that he's doing for us in partnership with some other folks like the Nature Conservancy and Virginia Wesleyan and so forth, on conserving the urban forest to reduce flooding. This work came out of some of the presentations that we had last year, one in particular that we had on August 26th, when, on our Sea Level Rise series, with Brian Van Eerden of the Nature Conservancy talking about the state of the forest in Virginia Beach. So I think this is going to be really a great presentation, and I hope you all will be able to come. That had come out of a symposium that we had had in April, when we had accumulated a whole day's worth of speakers from the Albemarle-Pamlico Network that has really led to a lot of partnerships. It's creating some really good opportunities for us to share research. We are beginning to plan one for this year as a follow-up. I know oftentimes, there's a year skipped, but I think with us doing all the Dewberry work this year, we really need to maintain that partnership and enlarge on our connection with some of the research that's going on with the academic institutions and the other municipalities around the Albemarle. We've got a great opportunity, so we are beginning to plan that, and I hope we'll be able to have that in the spring. And I hope at our retreat, we will be talking about this policy report from Dewberry. I really think it's a great place for us to start. I hope we can go through and pull down all of the low-hanging fruit and adopt these policies and get moving forward, because I think we're already doing a lot of those things, and we need to make it official.
Hey, Sabrina.
I want to pass out a resolution that I've been working on that's up for consideration on February 19th, and it's for the City of Virginia Beach to join as a member of the American Flood Coalition. This actual resolution arose out of a discussion that I had with Delegate Kelly Fowler, and we were talking about just things we can do to help with flooding and sea level rise and just ways to increase, you know, what we're doing and get, you know, funding for the situation that we're having in Virginia Beach, if you can pass those around. But I'd like for you to look at it. The American Flood Coalition offers a national voice and also national resources and tools to help us with flooding. And it's always good to bring national attention to, you know, an issue or concern that you have, because you, of course, create awareness and opportunities for faster, you know, prevention. One of the things I understand is that for every dollar we spend in prevention, we save $4 to $7 in looking at ways to address flooding. So please take a look at it. I know Jessica has already agreed to support it. So as Ms. Henley has talked, have, you know, okay, Delegate Fowler said she spoke with you, and she sent out an email and said you were in agreement with supporting it. If that's not correct, certainly let me know.
No, I'm, you're heading in that direction, but I hadn't seen it. Thank you for sending it to us.
Oh, okay. Okay, so she hasn't showed it to you, but she did have a conversation with you, correct? No?
That she was going to send it.
Oh, okay. Okay, good. That's what, that's what the conversation would have been about, though, that particular resolution. And I worked on the draft that she had, and it's a collaboration, also worked with our staff attorney here, Mr. Stiles, worked with him, and also Mr. Ingram. And it's been a collaboration back and forth, and this is the final product. And also, no, I spoke with Rosemary and Shannon about it as well. So we just want everyone to take a look at it, and hopefully, it's something you can support. Certainly take an opportunity and research it online if you'd like, and if you have questions. We certainly also have a representative from the organization who will come down, you know, and speak to you about it. But on February 19th, it will be one of our agenda items to vote on, and Delegate Fowler will be here to talk about it at that time.
Okay, John.
Can we include in what goes to public sees? I'd just like to know what the Enabling Charter or just what the, obviously, any coalition's got to have some governance document that they have. That would be nice to know who it is and who the current members are, because I think public will be asking, also would be asking those questions. I know the public will be as well. I don't have an issue with this, but I just, people want to know, what is the coalition? What's their bylaws? Where they're located? Who their officers are? Who the members are? Those are all the who, what, where, what, and how questions I think that we would want to know.
I'd be totally, yes, we can include that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Great. John?
I had a, oh, go ahead, Beth. You had your hand up before.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, I did have a chance to see this.
Oh, good.
So I did would like to be added as a group.
Good, yeah, yeah.
But I think, I think this is a great opportunity. I did a little research on the coalition, and I think it'll be a good resource to us to see what other localities are doing best practices and how we might find more creative solutions and hopefully become a leader of this group.
Yeah, we have, and we have an opportunity in talking with the representative, just to be a leader, you know, in this whole, you know, sea level rise, flood prevention, you know. So I think it's a great opportunity for our city and our residents.
And thanks for bringing it forward. We certainly got to be open to every opportunity.
Yeah.
To put our, put our fingerprints on it.
Oh, yes, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's really good.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
John?
I know I always ask for these, but since we're going to a retreat, especially for new members, if you've never read A Bond Prospectus, it's the most complete comprehensive assessment of the city all in one place you can get, that also has to meet the SEC's requirements for transparency and accuracy, so usually, the data is very good. I would encourage you to read it, it's a great insight on who the biggest employers are, you know, all that kind of stuff, it's great demographic information, but I did want to share today on page 820, because this is as of 30 June of 2018, for the 151,329 people who work in Virginia Beach, excluding military, and this is private sector, independent of where they live, the average weekly wage was $782, that's less than $40,000 a year, and for 77.5% of the people who work in services, wholesale, retail trade of the total, the average weekly wage is $114. And why this is important, this deals with our capacity and ability to pay, as we look and look at our ambitions at the retreat, they are going to be governed by what people make, and so I think this is very helpful, and I would encourage each of you to secure your own copy and look through that as a skim, at least the demographics section, you have to go through all the financial stuff, but the demographics are very good and very relevant to our retreat.
Well, we have that in our packet.
The prospectus.
Jessica.
I just wanted to invite everybody who would like to come. I have my town hall on February 7 at Kempsville High School, 7 o'clock. Be there.
I have one tomorrow night?
Or be square.
Okay, and I think that was a great discussion. If I could just close this, what I call a point of pride. Last night, I was at a Navy League, you know, banquet, and a gentleman approached me and thanked me profusely, and mostly the city of Virginia Beach, for bringing a marvelous place for the Navy to live, work, and play, and this gentleman was Admiral John Richardson, who is the Chief of Naval Operations, and he was very complimentary about the quality of life that we have here for all the sailors that live here, and, you know, the welcoming we have and the way that we've built the relationships with the Navy, and during his formal comments, he also acknowledged Virginia Beach and Norfolk, you know, Kenny Alexander was at the table, too, and I'll tell you what, it was a real point of pride for our city and our council in the bridges that we have built, you know, with our military population here. And the other thing I'd like to thank, you know, last week, the city hosted a get-together, roundtable discussions, you know, pre-retreat, and I want to thank the, you know, council people that showed up, and I don't know, but the folks I talked to that participated, the tables were diverse, they were good conversations, they were civil, and a lot of people that maybe didn't agree on a lot of things actually got together and got to listen to each other, and, and once again, I thank the council folks for being there. I had to run off to another event, but from what I saw, it was a tremendous communication among different people that was diverse, and I think it's going to produce some fruit, you know, going forward.
Very happy.
Yeah.
They were really happy that we had taken the time to do this.
Yeah, so I want to thank all concerned. Staff did a great job, Mr. Hanson, with the facilitation and the recording and the organization of everything. It was a very well-run and well-received event. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, are we ready for the agenda review?
Yes, sir. Under ordinances and resolutions, any speakers on it? Items 4 and 7F, 4 and 7F will be heard. Anybody else have any issues with any of these?
I'm voting no on 1.
Hold on one second. So.
Item 4.
7F.
4 and 7F.
I have a substitute for number 4.
Okay, well, 4 we're hearing.
Pardon?
4s we're going to hear, so.
Let him talk about it.
Okay.
I would just like to comment on 6A, transferring $2 million from open space and park infrastructure development. This is just something we'd need to talk about at some point, but somewhere along the line, the open space funding became Parks and Rec development maintenance money, and I think when we read the Duberry report, we kind of see a need to have some open space program again, so I hope this is something we're going to reconsider.
Okay. Everything else good?
Yeah, everything else, John?
I'm voting no on 7.
All 7A through F?
Just A, 7A.
Okay. Anybody else, before I get back to you, David? Anybody else on any of these? Okay, David, what were you going to say?
Okay, so regarding the parking and the RPP, when all you have is a hammer, it seems like everything looks like a nail, and I think the RPP, the current resolution to modify the RPP and carve out just a special exemption for one neighborhood is problematic, and there's wide opposition to just taking the RPP and changing it in just one instance. So what I'd like to do is propose that we substitute a motion that I put together, I'd like to put together a plan where we can have an ordinance that affects the entire city as opposed to just trying to take the RPP and apply it in this situation. The RPP was designed to help employ, to take care of employees and overnight parking in residential area in the motion front. It's overseen by the RAC, and it's under their purview. They've asked that we defer the existing motion. I'd like to actually create something new, because what we're talking about is construction problems that are causing parking problems in the resort, but it's something that could be, could affect any neighborhood in Virginia Beach. When you have construction issues, we could have a large construction project at Kempsville High School, it could affect surrounding neighborhoods. So I'd like to have an ordinance that would address a citywide event like construction that can happen anywhere, and do it in a way that doesn't just carve out the RPP and try to use the RPP for something it really wasn't designed for. So I have a copy of the ordinance, and then following that, I'd like to, then I think, I think within the context of this ordinance, we can discuss the Cavalier Shores issue, which I also have a motion, or I guess it's a resolution, to address that. So I guess I'm asking for a two-fold process. If we can have it heard tonight, that would be nice.
Heard tonight and voted on in the future, David.
The resolution would take eight votes. It's not a substitute motion. I don't believe.
You need a super majority to.
Yeah, I'm not going to do that.
Okay, so I just wanted to say what you're proposing. I mean, I understand about, because I've talked to you about the construction thing, which you and I talked about, we should delay this for probably 30 days to, or have the public weigh in on it.
Yeah, and that's, and that's okay.
I don't think RAC has asked.
Yeah, and RAC is, I think 30 days might be too long, but if we could do it sooner, that would be great.
And I think it's a worthy thing for us to look at, I really do. So how do you want to combine this with the Cavalier Shores?
Situation? Well, I don't think we should vote on the Cavalier, I think we should defer the resolution for the Cavalier Shores as is, because it's taking the RPP and trying to do something different.
Okay, all right, well, then, just so we can get to our executive session, then, we're going to be hearing Cavalier Shores, because we have speakers on it.
Okay.
So you'll be able to determine out there, but I appreciate you giving everybody this, because, because now we have something to look at.
Will we be voting on Cavalier Shores?
Two things.
Not, well, it's, it's going to be what the motion is.
You can put a vote for it.
Okay. Okay.
Going to planning items, item K1, Lynn McDermott Town Center Jewel LLC, 4452 Virginia Boulevard, District 5, Lynn Haven. I'm okay with it, I think it's, I think they're putting a sign there where it's ultimately going to be covered up, but if they want to do it, I'm fine with that, you know.
Well, they've got some offices or companies in the back that nobody can see.
I'm just going to be, if his consent is yes versus the Planning Commission recommendation, I'm a no vote on that.
Okay. Clear Creek Holdings LLC, conditional changes zoning, R10 residential and I-1 light industrial to conditional I-1 light industrial, vacant parcel off South Bird Neck Road, 608 feet off Carissa Court, Beach District. Mr. Nygaard?
There's been some opposition today, I'd like to defer until we can talk to all of the parties.
Are they going to be speakers?
Do we have speakers?
I don't have any signed up yet.
Thank you, David, for deferring that.
Do you have a date that you want to defer it to?
I think two weeks.
The 19th?
Yeah, 19th. We should be able to have it.
Consent deferred to February 19. LBH LLC, conditional changes zoning from 7.5 residential to conditional A24, 463 North Witch Duck Road, Bayside District.
I don't have any problem with it.
I just want to bring one thing to people's attention if they didn't catch it, the way they adopted to meet the impervious surface by the increased density and the increased lot coverage was to reduce parking to the minimal level on that site. Anyone who looks at apartment complexes, even at the old standard and thinks all the cars get on the lots, is not reality. I think the solution that was proposed is a fantasy relative to the thing, but that's how they solved it, by moving to minimum parking so that reduced the impervious surface and leaving the bigger footprint. I think we all know what parking does. I just want to make sure that if you didn't read that closely, that's how they solved the problem. I'm voting no.
So you're a no on this one. Okay, item 4, Richard C. Trotman and Seven Cities Tattoo, 5296, 5298, 5300, 5302, 5304, all the way up to 5318 Providence Road, Kempsville District.
Do it.
Item 5, Atlantic Auto Works Limited and John and Betty Willis Revocable Living Trust, 5479 Virginia Boulevard, Kempsville. Iron Asylum 2 LLC, Virginia Kempsville LLC, conditional use permit, indoor and outdoor rec facility, 1832 Kempsville Road, Centerville, Ms. Wooton.
Yes, I haven't heard any opposition against it.
It's a vibrant.
Jarmeen and La Crea Westmoreland Family Daycare Home, 4857 South Oliver Drive, Bayside District.
Fine, mother.
Item 8, ordinance to amend, Section 1.3 of the Flood Plane Ordinance, Ray, definition of repetitive loss. Jessica, you had a comment on this last time. Are you okay with this?
Yes.
Everybody okay with this one? Okay, ordinance to amend, Section 201 of the City's zoning ordinance, Ray, permits for fences. Louis, you had a comment on this one last time, if I recall.
Yeah, they've changed the ordinance now to better suit the situation that I had tried to address, so I'd like for it to be passed.
Is there any, there's no speakers on this? I'm going to vote no on that.
I'm a no vote also.
Okay, so Morrison, Abbott, no on this one.
To get a permit to get a place.
Got it?
Yep. Okay, moving on. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from the open meeting allowed by Section 2.2-3711A. Code of Virginia is mended for the following purposes. Legal matters, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to the actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, and consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A7, Mid-Atlantic Arena versus City of Virginia Beach, and then personal matters, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.2-3711A1, council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agencies, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Ms. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Ms. Ralph?
Aye.
Ms. Nygaard?
Aye.
Ms. Wooton?
Aye.
Ms. Payton, Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Sherwood?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
And a zero.
So there are sandwiches in the afternoon.